This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called order at 5:54 PM Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Baller.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Susner.
Here.
Ms. Selena.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
And this evening, we have guests who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, tonight, we have the pleasure to have students from Friddell Middle School to lead us in the pledge.
2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any items that need to be changed?
Yes, there are two changes to the agenda. Item 7.06, Approval of Boundary Adjustments, has been moved to 7.01. And item 7.10, Resolution Disciplining Employee, has been added to the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. 3.01, Volunteer Recognitions. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, tonight, we are recognizing some individuals that did some really cool work out at Riverside. So at this time, I'm going to call Lisa and Matt and Lita here as well. There she is, hiding in the back.
We're here to recognize three young adults. I've known them since they were students at Mayo High School. I have been lucky to know them as they've grown into amazing young adults in our community. I have Carlos, Marisol, and Brusada. But this summer, I had invited Marisol and Brusada to join me at a nonprofit gala fundraising event, and I had the pleasure of introducing them to Matt Ruzek. I had shared with Matt that Marisol is an incredibly talented artist. And right off the bat, Brusada, she had Matt with her wit and charm. And he invited them to come to Riverside, and he had several projects in mind for them at Riverside. But it has gone well beyond what they're putting on the walls at Riverside. I mean, I'll let Matt and Lita touch on some of the things that they're doing there at the school. But again, it's more than what they're painting on the walls. It's what they're giving to the students and the staff there.
Good evening, all. Thanks for having us. And I'll speak very quickly because Lita has created a video that shows our appreciation at a greater extent through the student voice in our building. But Marisol, Carlos, and Brusada have really just become part of our family, which is what we want. But it happened much faster and to a greater extent than we could have even imagined. And like Lisa had shared, just meeting them, I knew that there was something spectacular about them. They have a talent for not only art, but also creating and sustaining relationships. They've worked tirelessly in our building, all through volunteer efforts. We had a tree at the Festival of Trees. It would not have been completed if it had not been for these three. Our partnership with the DNR, they've done all sorts of crazy things that I don't think any of them ever thought that they would, and they do it with tremendous smiles. Our students love them and really just see them as, like I said, a part of the Riverside family. They're in the Family Resource Room, supporting with Ms. Casper. On a very cold day, they were out at our Big Backyard Celebration, and they were making fish prints with actual fish and coloring and decorating rocks with students. They're just amazing human beings, and they're exactly what we hope our kids get to experience. And so, we're just incredibly blessed to have them as part of our group. So I'm immensely grateful. They've made me so much better, and they've certainly improved the lives of our children. So I'll let Lita show you a video.
So many beautiful things in life. This is that journey began with happenstance, community, and collaboration.
When Mr. Matt Ruzek was introduced to Marisol Rodriguez and Brusada Santiago by her friend Lisa Weber last spring at a gala, of course, it came up that Marisol is a talented artist who had been on a bit of a painting hiatus. When Mr. Ruzek saw photos of her work, he instinctively asked if she would be interested in using Riverside's pillars as her camp.
We asked if we had any jobs for artists in the building. I showed him a picture of my work. They do exchange contact information. If I was able to work, it would start in August. He showed me the pillars and asked me what I would do.
In late August, cousins Marisol and Brusada, along with friend Carlos, began carefully prepping and planning their vision under the leadership of artist Marisol. I was like, "I don't think I can do this all by myself," Marisol said. "We can do the simple work." "She does more detail work," Brusada says. And they haven't turned back. The first pillar in the community school's design, I just put my own spin on it.
For the second pillar, I just walked around it. It seemed like a fish tank. The space was too small to add something big, so I thought a fish tank would be cool. Assistant Principal Ms. Heidi Howe mentioned that 5th grade was working with trouting in the classroom. And Century High School was studying fish and habitat. Marisol had never painted fish before, so it was a new challenge. It was important to us that the idea was something from school, something that people can recognize and connect to.
For the last pillar, I was thinking that we will tell four stories. The first idea was a large piano because of the music programming. We really hoped to get a touch sensor so the kids can interact with the piano. I also keep hearing kids ask if there was something sportsway. So we added a basketball hoop, and it was facing the gym. When kids walk by, they do a swish with their hands. To us, that means that kids are thinking about the arts. They are interacting with it, which is what we hope would happen. Tom Riverside's head engineer says that he sees the kids act different when they see the pillars. They slow down to look and see what's new. They are more focused when they walk by, says Tom.
I'm just so amazed every time they come by, and they have job openings immediately for us. It feels really cool. It makes me think we're doing something really amazing, catching their attention, so they want to spread it. It's pretty cool, says Marisol.
When I asked what the project has done for them, Marisol says, "For me, I feel like it's happened, helped me come out more. People know me more in the public area. I haven't painted in a long time, and coming back to this is bringing me back into what I like to do." She adds, "Coming back to art is waking me up. Coming to Riverside makes us open our eyes more, realizing there is a lot more than just painting possibilities. There's part of us in Riverside," says Marisol.
In addition to splash of color, joy, and thoughtfulness beyond simply the walls of Riverside, all three leaders continue to pursue academia, work, and still find time to channel their passions and community grips. One specific passion is all three share is working to protect the dream act at a time when its future is uncertain. Please come see them and their work at Riverside as their artistic footprint expands.
Do the three want to stand up?
You know, and I think I've said this before, but one of the things, unfortunately, in our society today, our young people and young adults often get criticized for being self-centered. But I can tell you, my experience here in Rochester, our young adults and young people are really about serving others and doing things for others and for their community. And this is just a perfect example. So on behalf of Rochester Public Schools, I want to thank you and present to you a certificate.
Well, my name is Marisol, and I didn't really know what to do when I first started. But as the time passed by, it kind of got easier for me. It's kind of hard for me because it's true that I kind of went away from my artwork, and coming back to it made me a lot more stronger and met a lot of nice people. And I'm just really happy that I'm here at this moment.
Let me share one more thing, and this is for the community and the board. But Ms. Casper has worked tirelessly to incorporate a mural on the outside of our building and has written countless grants. And Marisol, Brusada, and Carlos are going to participate in the training and the development of the mural that will go outside, and you'll see it all in the community. And their continued efforts and contributions then will enhance the opportunities and abilities of other artists because it'll be something that we can replicate, especially when we have wonderful human beings like these three. So you're going to see a lot more, and you're going to be able to participate with them. And if you don't, it's your fault. So we love them. So thank you all very much for the time.
3.02, Minnesota Activities Director of the Year.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to ask Jeff Whitney, Activities Director from Mayo High School, to join me. Jeff Whitney was nominated by his peers in Region 1 AA. He was one of eight finalists across the state of Minnesota. His administrative leadership spans over 27 years at Rochester Mayo High School. His grassroots involvement as a student, a coach, parent, and administrator has framed great and lasting traditions for his school community. As an alumni of Mayo High School, Jeff understands firsthand the values instilled in everyone who wears green and gold. It is clear that Jeff's pride in being a Spartan has made a positive impact on the culture of Mayo High School. As the Big Nine Conference Executive Secretary, his belief has always been to do what is right for each student-athlete. A colleague said, "His passion, commitment, drive, dedication, and competence have kept him in this position for all this time, a tribute to the great Activities Director and person he is." Over the years, Jeff has participated in many Region 1 AA and Middle School/High School League committees and numerous Minnesota 3A state conferences. He has been actively managing the Section 1 baseball and boys' hockey tournaments for many years. Please join me in congratulating Jeff, Minnesota Activities Director of the Year.
Okay. Thank you very much, obviously, for bringing me down and recognizing me. It's a very humbling honor, and especially to be recognized by your peers. Just take a few minutes. I want to thank a few people publicly and just say a couple of words about Mayo High School. It's obviously been a dream job for me. I grew up across the street, literally 200 feet from the front door. So I was a student-athlete there, and I graduated from Mayo High School. I taught before I became an athletic administrator. I coached for 20 years while I was doing the Activities Director job. And then, obviously, as Mr. Munoz said, I'd been doing the Activities Director for 27 years. I spent 40-plus years in about two square miles of property in southeast Rochester. And I used to do things at Mayo High School. I used to play street hockey, for instance, in the tennis courts. I would really get mad at a kid that did that now as athletic director. But I did a lot of goofing around over at Mayo High, and obviously, I'm here as an administrator now, many years later. It's, as I said, a very humbling honor. And I believe it's a Mayo High School award. I've had the opportunity to work with many great people there. I was hired many years ago to work for this district, and I'd like to thank the Rochester Public Schools for the opportunity to be in this position. I'd like to thank the Mayo High School administration. I've had some great principals and assistant principals to work with. It's definitely not a job that you can do by yourself. It's got many facets that go with it, and I'd like to thank all of those. I've seen many of them go through there, and they've helped me immensely. I'd like to thank three people that mentored me greatly. Retired Athletic Director Gary Addington, who was my supervisor for many years. A dear friend and co-coach Lauren Grasso, who was also my coach when I played hockey at Mayo High School, and taught me many things on how to deal with young people. And Mr. Engelhardt, another retired Athletic Director, who was the AD at Mayo High School when I graduated from Mayo. I'd like to thank my coaching staff immensely. I work with some amazing people. It would not be a very fun day at the office if you didn't have great people to work with. And I have some amazing coaches. And I'd also like to thank my assistant in the Athletic Department, Robin Erickson. She's been there for 15 years. It's definitely a two-person job, and she is amazing, and I would pass out if she didn't show up. I also have an individual that's been with me for a number of years, Sam Bailey, who's kind of, I would call him my assistant athletic director. He would drop anything at any second to help. Sometimes, I can't leave events, and there's something going on, and there's a leak in the pool or whatever, and he'll be the first one to run to the hardware store and buy some putty and stick his thumb in the leak. And he's an amazing man, and he's always been there to help me whenever I need it. And also, I'd like to thank my family. My son Alex was born in 1991, the first month that I took this job. And my younger son Max was born in 1994. They grew up while I was in this position. And I know I've had more boxes of popcorn at the concession stand than I've had suppers at the kitchen table with them because I'm usually at events. But they've always been there. I've had an opportunity to coach them and spend a lot of time in athletics with them, and hopefully, that made up for the time that I missed at supper. But they were always there to support me when they knew I needed to do the job. And then, my wife Stephanie, who knows what kind of a job it is. Luckily, she worked at Mayo High School for a number of years. She's at Willow now, but I got a chance to eat lunch with her every day. I'd never ate supper with her very often. But she knows what kind of job it is and what it takes to be there all the time, and she was the first one to always say, "See you later" when I headed off to athletic events. And then, last but not least, I think the student-athletes and the kids in activities. Obviously, I wouldn't be able to do what I do if it wasn't for them. And I know what it was like. I was one of those kids at Mayo High and enjoyed all the things that we believe are important for them to enjoy. And I'm glad that you guys give them the opportunity to do what they do every day so that I can supervise them and make sure they learn the lifelong lessons that we know are very important to them. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. And thank you, obviously, for bringing me down and honoring. It's a very humble honor, and I still don't know if I realize it happened, but thank you very much.
3.03, The MLK Poetry Contest.
Yes, I'm not for sure if our students is Izzy here tonight. Sweet. We didn't know if you were going to make it since we didn't have school today. This is Izzy, and she's at Jefferson, right?
Yes.
And she won the Martin Luther King Poetry Contest. We have two students. The other one let us know this afternoon that she was not able to make it. So we've asked Izzy to come and recognize her and also to have her read her poem for us. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. I'm very happy to be here. "As Strong As Iron. A Flood, A Hurricane. Washing Away All Hope In Equal Rights. Winds Howling, Houses Ripping Into Shreds. Death, Loss, Fear. The Things That Feed This Mighty Storm. With Humongous Waves Of Despair. Only To Be Harmless Compared To Hope. The Thing That Feeds The Heart. The Thing That Makes Weak To Strong. The Poor, The Rich, And For Lost Ones To Be Found. The Dams That Hold This Big World Together. But Still, The World Is Full Of Loss And Despair. Though The Weak Sometimes Never Grows Strong. And Sometimes, Some People Are Too Lost To Be Found. And Some People Can Never Fledge And Take Flight. To See And Raise The Hope In This World. That They Only See The Waves Of Lost Hope And Weakness. The Winds Of Fear. So We Must Raise The City Of Hope And Peace. Still Standing. And Batter The Waves With Our Courage. Reverse The Winds With Laughter. For Let World Peace Stand As Strong As Iron Forevermore. And Build This Hill Of Equal Rights. To A Mountain That Never Crashes Down."
And Izzy is just a 4th grader. I think we're going to continue to hear big things from you. You keep writing. 3.04, Fuel Up to Play 60.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Levi, Principal at Friddell Middle School, and I think a few students. And we had multiple schools participate in the Fuel Up Play 60 Super Bowl week, but we asked them to come and talk a little bit. You know, it's not every day you have the NFL SuperKid in your district, so we thought we would bring her to the board to talk a bit about their experience.
Thank you, Board and everyone, for having us here tonight. I'm going to do what smart leaders do and turn it over to the people that actually make this happen. We've got our two Fuel Up to Play 60 advisors, Jen Conan and Abby Seams, and they're really the engine behind what the kids do in some special events. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and I'll pay for surprising them tomorrow.
Okay, so I guess we'll just do a little introduction about our program. This is just our second year of having the Fuel Up to Play 60 program at Friddell, but we have one of the largest groups in the district. We have somewhere around 45 to 50 students in grades 6 through 8 who participate. And we hold bimonthly meetings that occur during advisory, so as to not take away from academic time. And during those meetings, we talk about the opportunities that the Fuel Up to Play 60 organization provides on their website to participate in challenges and do different activities. And then, we also plan our activities and events that we do at Friddell. So this year, we are doing physical activity breaks because we did a school wellness investigation, which showed us that we were not getting the appropriate amount of physical activity per week at school. So we now do things like relay races and jump rope contests and activity stations and limbo contests and fitness dice, and just a variety of things that the students are basically brainstorming and saying, "Hey, let's try this. Let's do this." Our job is really just to guide them in that and then allow our student members to be the leaders because that's a big part of what Fuel Up to Play 60 is, is encouraging student leadership.
And through the activities that the children do on Fuel Up to Play 60, they were invited to the Farm Bowl that was part of the Super Bowl activities. So I'll let them talk about it. And then, two of our students presented an innovation, and they'll talk about what they received and what they presented, and they've done a fabulous job.
Me and Manasa went to the Farm Bowl, and it was a really cool experience. When we went there, had it all set up, they showed us a little preview of the course, which is very cool. They had drones to fly through and drop down. You had to change a tire, put a little wrench on a milk thing to have milk flow through, and a hay bale, which was really cool. Got to see a bunch of cool athletes, football players and farmers, and it was a fun experience.
I think it taught us a lot about teamwork and how to be a team, and I feel like that's very important, knowing that teamwork is how you achieve stuff.
Yeah.
And then, me and Manasa also went to an innovation challenge to pitch about, to get an electric bulletin board and the software to run it for more education about nutrition.
And we are very pleased to have won $2,000 at a $2,000 grant, and we hope to use it in the most wise way we can.
One thing, they're very modest. Matthew and Anna Willman went last summer to a Fuel Up Play 60 conference during the summer up in the cities. They're great leaders and role models in the building. And like I said originally, they thought they could get $1,000. They ended up with $2,000, and they're being creative. How do we spend it? Invest it in our school, our community, to help us eat right and move more? And they're just great role models in our building and throughout. And all could have been selected the NFL Play 60 SuperKid, presented by Danimals. So thank you for recognizing the team and their advisors, and we're very grateful.
3.05, School Board Recognition Week.
This week, we celebrate School Board Recognition Week. This week is designed to build community awareness and understanding about the critical role an elected Board of Trustees assumes. Their commitment to service and public education affects the present and future lives of our children and our communities. School Board membership is one of the most personally demanding forms of public service. Serving on a school board has been described as "the toughest volunteer job in America." These volunteer leaders also are responsible for formulating school district policy, approving curriculum, maintaining school facilities, adhering to state and federal education law, legal concerns and the complexities of school finance, including budgeting and taxation, requires them to spend many hours in board training programs and personal study to enhance their understanding of these issues. Rochester Public School Board members dedicate countless personal hours attending meetings, school functions, and hours of preparation for the decisions they make. On top of that, many pursue their own professional development to stay on top of the ever-changing education landscape. There are dedicated individuals who are committed to the continuing success of our schools and students. Tonight, we salute the public servants of Rochester Public School Board, whose commitment and civic responsibility make local control of public schools in our community possible. Please join me in thanking these education advocates as they provide vision and leadership for student achievement, academic programs, district funding, and school facilities.
Full disclosure, before the meeting, we had cake.[620.66][620.66][laughter] 3.06, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Um, in addition to the board meetings, uh, board members are in various district boards and committees. Uh, are there any reports that any member would like to make about activities you've been involved in? Ms. Workman.
Um, yes, I had the opportunity to attend the AMSD, the Association of Metro School Districts, of which Rochester is a member on February 2nd, 2018. And the major topic of concern, which should surprise no one, was the special education cross subsidy, uh, which I believe Mr. Carlson will be, be addressing some of those impacts on his budget update later this evening. So, um, AMSD is recommending, along with the Minnesota School Board Association and superintendents, a task force to address the concerns with the goal of ending the cross subsidy by 2023. The cross subsidy is the difference in the state and federal contribution of special education with the actual cost. The gap for Rochester at this point is about $18 million, and that money comes from the general fund. Another goal of, which I've also mentioned before, is to align the language between the Every Student Succeeds Act, which replaces the No Child Left Behind Act, and the World's Best Workforce Report. At this point, there are, um, basically two kinds of reports that they have to do, and they're gonna try and make sure that those align to make it easier to file those reports. Um, we had a guest of legislators, a panel of legislators at the meeting, and, um, they also spoke on a number of things. Uh, one spoke on the $186 million state deficit, which I believe has turned into a surplus. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. Um, and then Representative Erickson said that sometimes the state should make policy, but there are many different needs across the state, which I interpreted as, uh, supporting local control. I have another meeting, but, to report on, but I'll let others take a turn first.
Um, I attended the family engagement meeting last week. Um, some of what you saw here with Riverside families is often reported in our family engagement, uh, meetings. Things from around the district, uh, just to highlight, uh, Olympic reading program at Franklin. Uh, they're doing some preschool home visits. Uh, there's some yoga going on. There's climbing and a climbing wall going on. Um, these are various, uh, sites across our district. Restorative Circles, Arts Integration, American Indie, American Indian Movie Night, um, and probably the most, uh, perhaps innovative family engagement, uh, report was from Hoover, uh, and how the staff at Hoover let the, uh, early morning SAC kids watch the cement being poured in the new edition through the window that still exists. And, um, just having that flexibility to be able to be in the moment with the kids and let them learn and watch and experience something as opposed to, um, come back, sit down, and, and we have to stay on task. So, um, many interesting things wanted to hear about at Family Engagement, and Ms. Ike also presented on the graduate, uh, profile, which was very, uh, exciting as well.
Anyone else?
Um, yes, I also attended the CCIAC meeting on February 5th, 2018, which is our Curriculum Review Committee. Um, there was a review of the Health Advisory Committee and the need to talk more about mental health. And there will be a meeting in this room tomorrow. Is that still on? It's not still on. Health advisory from...
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
It's not a public meeting, but yeah.
Yes, they are meeting to have a, a meeting on this tomorrow from, uh, tomorrow afternoon. Um, I was really pleased at the amount of information that was presented at this meeting, and, uh, we always welcome lots of people to come and learn about the curriculum in Rochester Public Schools.
Yes, Ms. Yeller.
Um, I also attended a webinar, uh, done by Minnesota School Board Association, titled Harassment: What School Boards and Administrators Need to Know. Uh, this largely focused on, uh, policies for student and staff, uh, around the topic of harassment. Um, I have shared those slides with Director Workman, um, and the, and as a policy, part of the policy committee, uh, for her to take a look at as well. And, uh, board members, you can, I believe, also watch the webinar. Um, it's recorded, so let me know if you'd like a link to that.
It's like ping pong.
Yes, okay. Um, I would just like to mention that eleven people have signed up for the School Board Academy on March 1st, which will be led by members of the school board in this room from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Um, this is informational for anyone who is interested in hearing a brief overview about the school and also for potential candidates. And I thought that Mr. Munoz did a really great summary of some of the responsibilities and jobs that we have to do as, as, uh, school board members.
I may fear down. Hi, have something to say?
You can go first.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is not really a, um, committee update, but I, as you're aware, I was this past weekend, I was in Nashville for the National Superintendent's, uh, conference. And one of the sessions I attended was the Dr. Elfi Hall Jones Memorial Luncheon, and it was, uh, uh, our keynote speaker, uh, the topic was equity. And the keynote speaker was the former Assistant Secretary of Civil Rights at the U.S. Department of Education, currently serves as the Commission, U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. Uh, she was appointed to that position in 2016. But anyway, uh, I was sitting in the back of the room and, and, uh, paying attention, of course. And, uh, she started wanting to share some of the great work that's happening in equity across the country. And all of a sudden, I hear my name, so my head pops up, ears perk up, and she shared about, she was really happy with the equity work that our district was doing, and, and, uh, and she shared some other districts that were doing, uh, some really good equity work. And so after the session, I went and, uh, talked to her and thanked her for that, and she, uh, was well aware of the work that we are doing with OCR. And it was nice to, uh, be called out at a, at a national conference and recognized for the work that we have done, even though we still have a lot more work to go. But it's always nice to, to be recognized for the work that we've done.
And I was just gonna say, at our last meeting, which had to be two hours long, we had to cut off a number of speakers, but along with the equity work, we had Brenda Witchman, Chris Ling, and Eric Johnson, three of our principals, who told about the works that their buildings are doing along the lines of equity and the amazing, uh, staff development that they're doing, the commitment that their staff has to every single child in their building. Um, I could have listened to them for another hour easily. We, we also had a physician here with others who was talking about the ACEs study they'll be doing with the Rochester School District, uh, adverse childhood experiences, and how growing up in a challenging environment, a tough environment, uh, can change the way a child learns. The more we know about how kids learn, the better we're gonna be able to help them become whoever they can become. We have so many initiatives going on. We have so many people doing good work, and we are so committed to this, that I'm, I'm glad, Mr. Munoz, you mentioned what you did, um, because we're not nearly done. Um, and we're not gonna rest until, uh, every child has the ability, has the opportunity to become all that he or she can become. Uh, this, uh, about a week ago, too, the Native American parents had a, um, an evening at John Adams that a few of us attended. Uh, they had a delicious dinner and then showed the movie, uh, More Than a Word, which gave some really important insight into the negative stereotypes that we continue to get about Native Americans, uh, the negative ads, the, uh, the mascots, uh, that continue, uh, to influence people. And again, the negative stereotype. Anybody else? Okay, we will move then to 4.0, Consent Agenda. Are there any items that, uh, you want removed for separate consideration?
With approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I would like to call, uh, everybody's attention. There is one, uh, teacher retirement, Ed Boyd, uh, fourteen years at the Area Learning Center, so Alternative Learning Center, excuse me. So, Ed Boyd is retiring.
Thank you. 5.01, Community Focus Team. This is a briefing item, and we have a group here.
Yes, at this time, I'm gonna have, uh, call Amy Ike up, and she can introduce the other speakers.
The new board members, we're back.
Your last saw us here on December 12th to present a first draft of the Task Force Charge Statement for the Community Focus Team. Um, that night, we gathered your input on changes that you would like to see, since this is a board task force. Uh, and so the Community Focus Team, uh, planning group got together and worked on some of those. And you have the adjusted or revised version in board docs with the changes. So, I'll turn it over to Catherine Davis and Kamau Wilkins, uh, two members of both the full team and the planning team, to take it away.
Thank you so much, Amy, and we're so glad to be back here. Um, we were so appreciative of the questions and the feedback that you provided us when we were here in mid-December. So, we took that information and we synthesized it, as Amy talked about. Um, then we put that back out to our CFT members for comment. Um, as, as always, it's very important for us that we work very transparently and provide everyone the opportunity to provide that input. Overwhelmingly, um, people were pleased with the revisions. Um, so then we went forward and did a, um, a vote for that. And again, overwhelmingly, the CFT is, um, very pleased with the revisions, and we're pleased to talk about those now. I'm gonna turn that over to Kamau.
Okay. I think, uh, did everybody get a copy of the revisions? So, I, you know, I don't know if I should go into deep detail about the wordsmithing that ended up, uh, happening. I think that there were a couple that were, um, you know, about kind of the limitations that we might set for, for the group as far as concerns for the board. Um, one of those was about, uh, the communication linkages was one that was talked about a little bit, about making, um, whether, how we provide information directly to the CFT. Uh, um, we kind of, I guess, Xed that out and said that we would make publicly available information on any updates to OCR activities, discipline, equity issues, programs and policies, and outcomes easily accessible to the CFT in support of its work. Um, and this is kind of one of the examples of the wordsmithing we did to kind of answer some of the questions and the feedback that we got. Um, I don't, I don't think I should go through each and...
The last section was...
The last, yeah.
One of the big ones.
The membership?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and so, membership was one where, you know, we were trying to figure out exactly how we would sleuth, uh, planning, planning that out. But, um, you know, initially, we had said, you know, anybody can come. We kind of made some bullet points as to, um, how we would include membership. Uh, it's still open enrollment with no dues. Anyone is welcome to attend any Community Focus Team meeting. Um, any community member is welcome to join the Community Focus Team at any time. The Community Focus Team requests at least one member of the Rochester Public School Board, Community Engagement Committee, um, to attend Community Focus Team meetings and be available for planning team meetings as needed. And in partnership with Community Focus Team, Rochester Public Schools may identify district staff to attend meetings with the goal of eighty percent community members and twenty percent district staff. District staff are welcome to attend in a community and, uh, parent, and/or parent role. Um, and we kind of described that as like, uh, you're wearing your parent hat or your teacher hat when you came into the, um, Community Focus Team meetings. Um, school board members, uh, the superintendent and cabinet members who attend, um, would be non-voting members.
Do you have any questions?
When, uh, the task force was here before, there was a district policy, and these types of task forces are limited to a year in nature. And there's discussion of, uh, policy revision to potentially remove that barrier for this well-needed or highly-needed and well-deserved group. Has there been any discussion in the, the policy committee around that space?
Well, I believe that the, uh, charge as it exists now is that it's for one year and can be renewed. And my expectation is that it would be renewed for as long as we're moving forward.
Yeah, we can look at that. The policy committee can look at that policy and make any changes that we need to make, so...
I, I think that'd be good, just as long as it's, it's renewable.
Well, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge the amount of time you guys have, um, the committee as a whole, not just, uh, the three of you present, but the amount of time and effort, uh, that you guys have put forth to bring this to, uh, this level of fruition. And, uh, um, I'm thankful that we're here, and, but perhaps more excited about what happens beyond this formal acceptance approval, if you will. And, uh, so, one question I have then is, uh, do you believe this will, um, enable, are there any barriers that you're aware of that would, uh, preclude you from reaching out to various, uh, communities to ensure that their voices are heard, collected, and, um, addressed through whatever concerns, um, that CFT may, uh, uh, come upon as relates to, um, I think the four or five areas you had identified?
I know, I know one thing that, uh, we've kind of already discussed in CFT is the idea of, uh, translators, um, so we can make sure that we're reaching out to, um, people that might not be, and I have English as a first language. Um, as far as barriers go, you know, with, with the district's help, uh, with things like Peachjar and, and access to those communities and, and, um, groups within our, our school district, I, I personally don't, I can only speak for myself.
No.
I've been here for three years. Uh, but, uh, um, you know, I think that the, the power of the group is actually in utilizing resources and, and resources within the community and accessing, um, groups that maybe the district doesn't necessarily, um, not necessarily think of, but, uh, you know, from our discussions with community outreach, and, um, I think that's one of the strengths of this group, actually.
I would say that's one reason that we have the strong link to the board through the Community Engagement Team as well, so that if we run across barriers, we can brainstorm through them.
Ms. Workman.
Yes, could you give me an idea of what the, um, ethnic and racial balance is right now in the Community Focus Team in terms of how it reflects the community or the district, and whether or not you think any changes could be made if you think there are necessary changes, and how you might go about that? I realize that was like six questions.
Yeah.[1666.71][1666.71][laughter] Sounds like a question I would ask. You know, I think that, um, I, I would say that we, we have opportunities to continue, increase, and engage and make sure all communities are represented. Um, I think that we've been, um, the people that have shown up have been very passionate about the work that we do, and I think now, moving forward, as we get past this and the foundational work, we're gonna be very intentional about making sure that we increase, um, especially people of color, um, in, in the, uh, in the process.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. And, and we haven't openly advertised or, or kind of, uh, tried to increase numbers of the CFT meeting, um, just so we could, you know, power through, um, this, this portion of getting, getting to the point where we, um, have set guidelines and our, our rules of, of engagement, um, that it wasn't, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been wise to add large numbers of people at that point. Um, but, uh, you know, we've kind of been talking about what do we, how do we do this? Because right now, honestly, it's, it's very white. Um, and we need to make sure that we're, we continue to, uh, change the, the demographic of the group. Um, I think we will do that, um, once we're confirmed and, and moving forward. Uh, because I think that, again, that's one of the strengths of the group, is the idea of, of outreach and, and helping people feel welcome to the process.
Yeah. Go ahead, Doc.
And, uh, so that's what I saw as a, a strength of Section 8 as relates to membership, how, um, you, not you, but, uh, the language is, uh, there to establish that any community member. And, and so, it would be perhaps useful for me to hear, uh, that, um, some effort, be it undertaken by the CFT or in conjunction with, uh, the board, community engagement, uh, will occur to attempt to identify. We know there are some forty-plus languages spoken... within the district, a number of different, uh, ethnic, um, groups which comprise those various language groups. So it would be nice perhaps to see a, uh, deliberate effort extended to at least inform with the goal of engaging.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, I guess I, I would just encourage you, I'm, I'm looking at your purpose and objective in, uh, to engage stakeholders, conversation of racism and, uh, provide advice and counsel and recommendations. I would also encourage you to go beyond that and really, uh, how can the community work and engage with us besides what's stated here? We, we can't do this by ourselves. We can't address the discipline disparities and achievement gap. We need our community to help us in providing support in a variety of ways. I, I don't know what that is right now, but I think in your engagement, um, if you can find a way that our community can support that work, it would be extremely helpful to us.
I know you've been working on this for-
Yes, absolutely.
Months, and I'm guessing that you wouldn't object, this is a briefing item, but you wouldn't object if somebody moved this to action?
Not at all.
So move.
Second.
Oh, it's been moved and seconded. Did not see that coming. Um, to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor of moving this to action, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's been moved to action. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the Community Focus Team as a task force of the board, working with the board's Community Engagement Committee on the work described in its charge statement, and be it further resolved that the task force shall remain in existence for the period of one year and may be continued by the board at that point for additional efforts.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Does that one year start like right now? I, I just want to make sure you had the benefit of starting right now and not-
We haven't voted yet, so it won't start until-
That's why, all right, well, assuming that we vote to approve.
Any other discussion? On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Five point oh two, Approval of Revised Achievement and Integration Revenue Plan and Budgets. This is a briefing item.
Yes, at this time I'll call Janie Gibson, Executive Director, Kirkman Instruction. Just, uh, just for the record, really, uh, we're not required to get board approval for this, but this is something that we've always done in the past. So we were going to brief you on this tonight and, um, seek your approval.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, as Superintendent Munoz said, is, we are bringing this before you. Back in November, we brought the full A&amp;I, um, or Achievement and Integration Revenue Plan forward. Um, that was a three-year plan, so it covered two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty. That plan has been approved. However, at this time, what we need to do is there are some revisions that we need to make. And so by March fifteenth, we have to submit any revisions as well as our budget for just the fiscal year nineteen. So what we're presenting to you this evening is a highlight of those changes that we are proposing to our plan as well as an overview of what we believe the budget will look like. Because we are still in the budgeting process, in the staffing process, we're working through some of the more, um, granular details, but we will present to you the information to the best of our ability tonight and then we'll go from there. So, um, in the plan, the revisions that are included are really just speci-, or specifically tailoring to two, um, things that will provide some additional revenue for us. So I don't believe that there will be any objections to that, but we will, um, talk through a little bit more of what those are. So the first change is language that includes, um, support in, with through the student technology levy. And the second one is a new thing for us this year, which is integration desegregation transportation aid. Um, because it's financial language, I'm gonna let John dis-, define it a little bit better for you and then we'll go on to the next pieces of it, so.
Sure, thank you. So the first one is not new to us. That's the student technology levy. That's where we've borrowed money every third year. Uh, we'll be planning to do that again, um, here within six, eight months. We'll need to bring a number to you and a, a proposal to do that. So I'd be just writing that in there officially so that it jives with that request when it comes. We borrow about four million dollars every time and we use that to buy computers and iPads, replace, um, our equipment that's three years old at that point. On the integration desegregation transportation aid, that is new revenue that we have never applied for. Uh, you only qualify that if you, uh, work with another district and you bus students together to do classes together. And, uh, perhaps Janie wants to give the details on how that would work.
So one of our collaborating districts, as you know, the integration and achievement revenue, you are a part, you have partner districts. And so one of our collaborating districts reached out to us about the potential of their students joining us at CTEC. And so they would like to participate, um, in classes at CTEC and in exchange, um, they would provide either some of the dollars, not necessarily the full tuition aid, but some of the dollars towards tuition aid, or possibly appoint to staff member, um, to help support where's, where would be needed as a result of it potentially increased enrollment. So we are still in the very early stages of working through some of the details, um, as far as what that would look like, but we didn't want to miss the window of opportunity by doing that collaboration between the two districts attending class at CTEC together. That would make us potentially eligible for this additional transportation aid. And so we have to put it into our plan. We have to submit it prior to that March fifteenth date. Then if we can, if amongst the two districts, we can work something out so that students indeed would join us at CTEC, then we have everything in place. So it's a little bit premature, but because of the timelines and the deadlines we needed to put it in, so you will see in the plan, the language, um, and what that potentially would look like.
And I, board members remember, I think I shared that information with you a couple of weeks ago. But as Janie said, we're still trying to work out the details and I hope it works out, but, uh, if it doesn't, then this funding would just, we wouldn't get it if it doesn't work out.
So all of that is additional revenue. And then we've got the actual, um, achievement and integration overall. And so, um, many of these positions have been funded through the achievement and integration previously. Um, we have our bilingual paraprofessionals. We have our equity specialists. We have our posa, our principal on special assignment, the discipline supervisor, um, two instructional coaches, ten academic intervention teachers, ten Spanish immersion teachers. Now that is up because, um, as you may or may not recall, so the achievement and integration revenue, we have to write a district plan that covers the entire district. And then if we have any racially isolated schools identified. So we write our district plan, which is the top part of that. And then the racially identified school for us is Gage. And so they have added a Spanish immersion program. It is going kindergarten through third grade. We will be adding fourth grade next year. So that's where you'll see the increase in, increase in Spanish immersion teachers as well as one more paraprofessional. And then we do put some dollars, um, by language we need to, um, put some dollars for professional development, um, to continue our work, um, in growing our capacity to, um, use cultural proficient teaching techniques and culturally proficient, um, structures within our schools. So again, not a lot of specificity here, and that's a little bit intentional because we are just starting the budgeting and the staffing process. But to present this to you tonight, so that we can get it approved, possibly next board meeting, so that we meet the March fifteenth deadline, we wanted to, um, just give you a quick introduction of, of the direction that we're going and, um, provide that information for you with the caveat that there will be a lot of work done between now and, um, the March fifteenth deadline.
So just to review, um, the revisions then need to be, um, approved by MDE.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, may I ask one follow-up? Um, could you give me a rough idea, Mr. Carlson, sorry to put you on the spot, as to how this, um, budget of almost three million dollars compares with previous budgets? Are, are we-
It is very close, probably within a hundred thousand dollars on previous budgets.
Okay. Cause I, I mean, I was thinking, you know, if it's substantially larger than what we have been proposing in the past, MDE might be less likely to grant it. So thank you for that information. I can now sleep at night.
Okay.
I, I'm, uh, curious as to the, not necessarily by name what the collaborating district is, but as related to slide two, um, in transportation and the, um, CTEC, how this is envisioned as potentially accomplishing or achieving integration, desegregation, uh, any thoughts on that?
Well, I can touch a little bit of that. Part of the, part of the plan is that, uh, right now it's a, it's a forced collaboration with the surrounding districts. And we have, each of the districts around us have their plan as well. They get a little bit of money, but not anything close to what we get. But it's really designed for their students to interact with our students, cause we have more students of color than they do. And one of the new things we're doing this year is we're, and I think, uh, maybe at one of the meetings you were, the school board, uh, student school board, we have, uh, students from our collaborative schools come to one of the student school boards. So those students are interacting with our kids as well. But it's just, uh, to be honest with you, Don, this is really probably, uh, what I believe be a true collaboration, whereas the other stuff that we do that's been happening forever, uh, and I was on a, a task force that tried to change some of the requirements of that, but it got, uh, taken to court and then all kinds of funny things happened there. But, uh, the stuff that we do now is, in my opinion, not real meaningful collaboration, whereas this is truly more of a collaboration because we're actually, the kids are integrated together in classes versus doing a one-time event is the way it's been for many, many years.
So to help me understand the use of the term integration, it, uh, as is being used here tonight, it is to perhaps, uh, make more reference to, uh, different students coming from different districts versus, uh, any reference to ethnic or racial designation.
Not exactly. So the, we are identified as a district for this revenue because our student population looks significantly different than those districts right next to us. If we were, um, in an area that our neighboring districts mirrored our population, we would not receive this additional revenue. But because the six districts identified nearest up to us look significantly different, then that's why we get these additional dollars. We receive these additional dollars, um, to help support, as Superintendent Munoz said, um, a collaboration to help all of our students, specifically the students from the districts who, um, are, do, are not as diverse. And their, their student population doesn't look like, necessarily like Rochester's does. So this does help, as, as Superintendent Munoz said, a greater collaboration. It'll be a true inner, inner exchange with, um, students from that district as well as students from ours. The other thing it does for us is, um, CTEC, when it was originally designed to, to, um, take place, was for a regional center. It wasn't ever thought that it was just gonna be just a Rochester. So this is like kind of the first opportunity for us to start looking at what it potentially could look like to include students from other districts. The other thing it does for us, CTE staff are not always the easiest to find and hire and, and get on board. So, um, if we do have a need for additional teaching staff and this dist-, other district has, for example, maybe another agriculture or maybe another welding or manufacturing or whatever it is, just the point two that will help some of our students then get into class that we otherwise would have had to say, oh, sorry, we've already got our max. We don't have an additional point two staffing. We'll have to choose a different elective. So it is kind of a win-win from both the achievement and integration piece, but also for opportunities potentially for our students as well.
And the other piece I would add, Don, it's not solely just integration. The statute's written as for integration and to address the achievement gap. And that's why we're able to fund the various positions that we fund out of this, this budget because it's addressing the achievement gap. So it's achievement gap and, uh, integration. Uh, I, I can tell you the task force, uh, we, majority of us are really pushing for having all the funding go to just achievement gap because of the integration work that was really happening was not true integration. So we're excited about this cause this, I think, is a, a great opportunity to do some integration with surrounding districts and then eventually surrounding districts. And then, as Janie mentioned, I think the concept of this CTEC was eventually for it to become a regional CTEC center for Southeast Minnesota. And this would be a good way for us to kind of work those details out.
Final two questions, uh, request actually, and, um, thank you, I appreciate it. I fully support. Um, thank you for the information. It's not something to ask in our approval on necessarily, but is it possible to, as we look at the budget overview, to actually, separate the, um, bilingual, I, I see there's a, uh, the positions, uh, that are tied toward, bilingual support and closure of gap. And I don't know if they're one and the same thing as viewed from this particular, uh, budget or not. If they're the same thing, then it's not necessary. Uh, if they're not, if you could perhaps do that. And then secondly, what the current makeup is, uh, of the students attending, uh, CTEC and/or staff makeup, uh, at CTEC. Thank you.
Two quick things. Um, fiscal year nineteen, when does that start, John?
That would be July first, coming up of eighteen here.
July first of eighteen is-
Yes.
Fifteen.
Yep, yep.
Is there any impact, uh, with outside students coming in to our CTEC program on our overall, um, funds per student?
Um, no, because I think this partnership that we're working on, we weren't going to charge them. I think their contribution would be potentially providing staff. If staffing is not an option, I do believe then we do have a tuition rate that we can charge-
Okay.
Just for sending kids.
So that, that, when I'm trying to get it as the, the per day student-
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, one of the things that we, and we were upfront, the very first day we met with him, uh, we liked the idea, but we are not gonna enter into something that's gonna cost us money or take up seats that our kids should have access to. So if there's seats available and if the funding makes sense, then it, it'll be a good partnership. If it's not, then we're, we're not gonna enter in agreement with them because we are not gonna take on additional costs because we don't have that to, um, to have their students attend classes. But we think we may be able to work something out so it doesn't have that kind of impact.
I, uh, Mr. Carlson, I hope that when you do a budget presentation, that you will remind the board and the public that this, should MDE approve it, that this money does not come from our current general fund. Is that correct?
Correct. This is, well, this is above and beyond.
It's above and beyond and it's funded by?
Uh, seventy percent state aid, thirty percent from the property taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? And you don't technically need our approval. So how do we?
Well, we, I mean, since our past practice has been, I think we'll just keep moving forward. But I think we can wait until March sixth, cause it's, we, that gives us time to get it submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven point oh one, Approval of Boundary Adjustments Effective for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. This is a briefing item.
Okay, before we get started, I, just a couple thing, comments I'd like to make and then I'm gonna turn it over to John and, and, uh, first of all, just a couple clarifying statements. The, if the board remembers, there's been, uh, a few board meetings where we have had parents come and tell us their buildings are too crowded and we need to do something about it. And, and I can tell you, uh, pie the last two or three listening sessions that I've done, that's, I've heard that, uh, as well. Uh, so the purpose of the, uh, boundary adjustments was to try to adjust that. So the purpose of the boundary adjustments was to try to adjust that, make some adjustments. And also, I do want to address a comment that made, was made earlier. Our statement about diversity was only to correct something that was appearing on social media, that there was statements on social media saying we were only doing boundary adjustments to try to change the diversity in some of the schools. So we were trying to clarify, that was not the intent of the boundaries, it was really to address the crowdedness at some of our buildings. As I shared with you, I think, at the study session, it's a very emotional time for those that are impacting, I understand that, and it's expected. Parents are here to speak, advocate for their children, and that, that's what parents do, and that's what they should do. We are here, just like you, to try to make decisions that we think was best for all of our students. So tonight, we're going to share with you similar, what was shared with you at the study session, also what we shared with the community a week ago, last Tuesday. And then, that would be Plan One, Option One. And then, we'll share with you the feedback that we received online, and also during the community meeting. And then we came up with an Option Two, that made some changes based on the feedback that we received. And then, Option Three will be to do nothing. And so, three options will be on the table. The one that we presented last week. Option Two will be a few slight adjustments based on some of the feedback that we heard. And then, like I said, Option Three is, is just to do nothing, and wait until we do build a new school. I can promise you, three, four years from now, when that new school opens, you're going to hear some of the same stuff, because you're going to have to move people, and they're, they're going to use the same research, and the same everything, and they should, because they're parents, I get that. But eventually, we're going to have to do some boundary adjustments when we do open a new school. The other thing I would say is, we're sharing with you a summary of, the activity we did with the community was, we presented the rationale for the, the boundary adjustments, we shared the boundary adjustments, and then we had them work in groups, very similar to what we did when we had Dennis Cheesebro when we did the last boundary adjustment. What were the strengths of the plan, what are the weaknesses, what questions do you still have, and then what suggestions do you have to make it better? So we're going to share the common themes that constantly appeared in those four different categories as well. So at this time, I'll, I'll turn it over to John, and then I'll probably jump in here and there.
Sounds good. All right, so I'm just going to run through a little bit of background on each one that was proposed in Option One. So first off, we had Bamber Valley to Riverside. You lose perspective of the big map and how it looks when I just dial into here, so I wanted to just share with you a little bit. So right now, that square that's highlighted on the screen in purple is an area that goes over to Bamber Valley. It's an area by, you could say, by Cub Foods, Big Lots. It's surrounded by Riverside in the brown area, and it's got Franklin on the other side of the road in the green area. So it's an island to itself in purple there. And those kids get on a bus, and they drive down the street, past the turnoff to Franklin, past Lincoln, you could even say they could go to Falwell or Riverside, like all their neighbors, but they end up over at Bamber Valley. And so, that's just been one thing that's been on the list for a while, to take a look at and see, would it be more appropriate to send them with the same neighborhood around them? Elton Hills to Churchill Hoover. Again, you're missing a little bit of perspective when it's just dialed in here, you can't see how the big map kind of has some disjointed lines, and this proposal of kind of taking that inverted seven, if you will, or upside-down L, kind of makes it more like in a square or in a circle. It really was to lessen the load at Elton. It really, technically, we didn't look at it to try and change John Adams or John Marshall, that was just a byproduct of, on the right is Kellogg's Century, and I thought it would be a little bit awkward to take one little slice there and make it different from everything else around it. Gibbs to Sunset Terrace. Again, one we've heard a lot of feedback on. We have heard for a long time about Gibbs having too many kids. This was a good process for us to look into some of the reasons, and some of, answer some of the questions as to why does Gibbs have so many. Partly, it's, there's been a lot of new construction. I talked to a realtor. If you look at Northwest Rochester, there's twice as many homes bought and sold near Northwest as there is in Southwest. It's just a very popular place to live, and perhaps, the new school, the newest school we have, it's almost ten years old at this point, is a popular place to be. We understand that. So the blue area is Sunset Terrace, and rather than draw the line somewhere else in the middle of the Gibbs, we just tried to encroach that line a little bit further to the west. It's already a little bit goofy there, as it's going down Villa Drive and up Hillsborough, and so on. Jefferson to Churchill Hoover. As you know, we have the Autism Spectrum Disorder Program there that uses seven full-size classrooms. Last year, we were looking for an eighth classroom. We ended up placing it at Bishop, so now we have an ASD classroom that stands alone, because there were no more rooms at Jefferson. Next, we were adding a ninth classroom. It's also going to need to go at Bishop, because there's no more rooms at Jefferson. For a long time, I've heard from the leadership at that school that they wanted all of the ASD at their building. They wanted to set the eighth and ninth classroom, they did not want it separated. I've also been on a tour there with the principal, who was, in the past, telling me about, you know, this kindergarten section that didn't have a real room, there's a class meeting on the old stage there. And so, I've had it in my mind that Jefferson was too crowded, there wasn't sufficient space. And in fact, last summer, we were going to invest many thousands of dollars to remodel the basement, to make a couple more rooms down there. And so, that was why we thought we needed to look at Jefferson and propose a change.
And I'd also add, Hoover and Churchill, since we are moving the preschool classrooms out of those two buildings, I think between the two, they're going to have four or five open classrooms. So we said, well, we need to feed some kids into those buildings. Well, logically, you take the neighborhood that's closest to that neighborhood and try to move kids into there. So that was the rationale, and I agree, I, there was, just two years ago, we were asked to spend, I think it was over $300,000, just to put a wall up in the basement, because they had some classrooms down there, and they, I don't remember which program is on the stage, but, so not only the space, but also the fact that it was connected or right next to our two buildings that have, are going to have open classrooms, it made sense to move that section of the neighborhood to Churchill Hoover.
Again, I think the perspective, if you step back, it kind of makes it a round or a square shape for the Churchill Hoover neighborhood. I was just trying to make that maybe more visually appealing, I guess. All right, so here's where it all sorts out, and it gets a little bit messy, because we're in the middle of enrolling kindergarteners for next year. So what this chart does is it tries to summarize line by line each school. So if you start at the top, you got Bishop, first column over is capacity. We would like Bishop to be around 350 if it were an ideal world. On December 1st, and these are the numbers we've been using the last couple months as we've been giving presentations, they had 504. As of right now, or last week, they have 467 enrolled for the 18-19 school year, and Option One doesn't do anything to address Bishop, so they would stay at 467. What I want you to know is, there's 451 kindergarteners, we are expecting, but we haven't, they haven't come down to Edison yet to fill out their paperwork and tell us they're actually enrolling in the public school. So on any of these elementary schools, we don't know where those 451 kids are exactly going to go. We have an idea if they did their preschool screening with us, but they could have moved since they were age three or age four, or in the last year, so. Churchill, they would be at 214 next year. With the proposed Option One, they'd bump up to 260. That's pretty close to where we wanted them to be. Elton Hills drops down to 447. Falwell stays the same, Hoover bumps up to 294, and then the others are the same, because we're not proposing any adjustments there. On our large schools, your eyes are going to go right to Jefferson, because we're kind of talking about that a lot, and I would agree with anybody who would say, I am not seeing this correctly right now, because there's 519 projected there. I think Jefferson's missing about 20 kindergarteners right now, they have 61 registered as of last week. They run around 80, that one year they bumped up, I think, over 100. So might be 20, 30 more kids that still need to register. If we go through with Option One, they will definitely be below the capacity. There's probably a group of fifth graders that's moving out that might be a larger class right now. Riverside would bump up to 498, Sunset to 709, Gibbs 751. Again, we've got 451 kids that we think are going to register, but we don't, their parents haven't confirmed them yet.
Go back to slide. I do want to call attention to Riverside. When you look at 494 and a capacity 700, we, we are also using three classrooms for the Right Fit Program. It's a district program for kids that are struggling with the traditional education system. So we do have three classrooms that, I think our max is 12 for each classroom, so that number's a little deceiving, because we do have three, three classrooms that are only 36, that could take double of that, probably, if we did our normal class sizes.
Okay. So that's a summary of our elementary school changes in Option One. Again, in the middle school and the high school, only was affected in that one neighborhood. And again, it was just because, right now, it's a JA switch to Kellogg, right through that neighborhood. So it already doesn't make sense, the way it kind of comes down and around, so you could argue that the way the boundary's set today isn't the right boundary. So middle schools, if we moved forward with the plan, we get a little bit closer. Our goal as administration has been to try to get all three middle schools, the large middle schools, all to at least 1,000, so that they're a little bit more close, and this plan would do that. And then the same thing in the high school, Option One. It was a very minimal change, we get that. It was just, I thought it would be odd if somebody moved into that neighborhood, not counting the kids that are there today, but if somebody moved into that neighborhood, they would be sent one way, and potentially, their next-door neighbor would go the other way. And so, it was just trying to align it all there. So here are the key themes and strengths. There are very few strengths noted on the feedback forums, online and on paper. Some people left in blank, some didn't put anything positive, but there were a couple that repeated themselves, and it was, obviously, it helps balance the enrollment to the projected, or projected enrollment to capacity. I did, we did find this one quote interesting, it was a whole perspective we hadn't even heard of or thought of, but it was posted online, it said, "We are very strongly in favor of the proposed boundary adjustments. We live in the affected neighborhoods and see this as a huge benefit. We currently send our kids to private schools to avoid the overcrowded schools we are assigned to. If the boundary is adjusted, and you changed our family to Kellogg's Century, we would likely switch our kids back to the public schools. Thank you for considering this option." We definitely had many weaknesses listed. The proposal would put extra stress on families, we heard that tonight in comments. Families have already established relationships within their current schools. Families may have purchased specific homes because of where they thought the lines were. For some, the proposed school would be further away from their home, and then their current school. I did want to note just one thing, if you did live in the Stonehedge neighborhood, that is technically about a tenth of a mile closer to Churchill than Jefferson is, I'll, but I will agree with you that Hoover is not closer than Jefferson is. And families would prefer this change not to happen as soon. So it is definitely an option that we could just delay this out another year, to give people time to react to it and plan ahead. One of the comments we pulled off the feedback there is, we've been at Jefferson for the last five years, I have a third grader next year, it's a big deal to leave that community of teachers, staff, and friends. It's not a decision I would support. It's not an easy decision for those that have fourth graders going into fifth, and their children in younger grades would be grandfathered in. And we saw that many times about, you know, the fourth graders today could stay, but if you had a kindergarten first grader, whatever, they'd be forced out. Ideas for improvement. Roll out the changes at a slower place, pace. Again, you could give a year notice on this if we wanted to. Wait to shift boundaries until new schools are built. Again, a very common theme, we know that if you go and put a new school in Northwest, it's going to be in somebody else's attendance boundary, because all the land in Rochester is already divided, so you're going to have to re-carve out, and you're going to have to change probably four or five schools to kind of make it all work out. And so, knowing that that could come in three years, let's just pause and wait three years, and just deal with the overcrowding as we go. This was another hot topic that came out a lot, was the exception to attendance, and we did do a deep dive into that to figure out the reasons why there are exceptions to attendance, and we did find many daycare exceptions and relocation exceptions that we could look more closely at. Restrict open enrollment to impacted schools. We definitely could say that if you are open enrolling into your district, Gibbs is not an option, or Jefferson's not an option. We could say, you're still welcome here, but you're, we're going to place you at Churchill, or we're going to place you at Gage, or wherever we had space. Again, Pete, I had many suggestions on, how about not my neighborhood, but draw the line over on this neighborhood, because that would be better. Certainly, we could go back to the map and we could redraw them. Allow students currently enrolled at impacted schools to finish out their elementary or middle school. You know, if they are in kindergarten, let them go all the way through fifth grade. That could be an option. And then rescind the exceptions for relocation and daycare, and close open enrollments to specific schools. We definitely could do that.
And I think along with that comment, there were a few who encouraged us to be a little stricter on the daycare exception. I think there was even a comment about that tonight. To be honest with you, the parent, they signed the form, we trust the parent, that that's their daycare. We don't physically drive and knock on the door and see if they're providing daycare either before or after school, that's something that we don't do. Are there some who maybe use an address that's not true? There could be. But like I said, there's a form, the parent signs off on it, we're assuming that it's, it's true, and we trust that they're being honest, but that was a recommendation we heard a lot, that really, check on those, and there are individuals who are using a daycare, especially probably in the Gibbs area, that really don't have daycare, they just say they do, but we do not go knocking on doors and check on that for sure.
All right. And one comment here, allow the school to move forward as it is, and work on funding to build a new school that will ease overcrowding. The district is going to continue to grow with time, and short-term solutions like this are avoiding the real issue that most schools here are at or above capacity. And I totally agree with that. That's partly why I started the presentation last week with an overview of our buildings, and how they are mostly above 100% capacity. Other points, just reminder that current fourth graders, we had said they could stay for fifth grader, current seventh graders could stay for eighth graders. We did do a lot of talking about current eighth graders, specifically, we heard some feedback about, I've been playing football for JM as an eighth grader already, or going through that. And I think that we agree that that is a good reason to probably let eighth graders who thought they were going to JM to continue going to JM. So we would propose making that little tweak to Option One.
And there's only, there's six eighth graders that would be impacted.
And then, we, again, we were redrawing the lines so that the neighborhoods stayed together, but didn't want to move ninth to 11th graders from the current high school that they started at. No high school is overcapacity anyway, so we would let the current students continue.
And we were a little concerned about how that would play out eligibility-wise, and they want to be accused that we were adjusting boundaries to stack one of our teams, and so we felt it'd be best to not even touch the current high school kids.
All right, so Option Two, after a lot of thinking and re-looking at it, we did not make a change to the Bamber Valley to Riverside. We kept that as is in Option Two. We also did not change Gibbs and Sunset Terrace line, we left that one proposed, same as Option One. Where we did make a change is, we looked at the Jefferson to Churchill, and decided to change the Stonehedge neighborhood, leave that one at Jefferson as it currently is, and then draw the line at 48th Street Northeast, and everything north of there, basically. So that would cover everything up to Hammond, and all of that rural land. It's about the same number of kids, even though square miles, it's, it's a very big area, but, you know, it's more rural, going north of 48th Street there. But, you know, it's more rural going north of Forty-Eighth Street there. We also looked at changing what we had originally proposed in the Elton Hills to Churchill move. And instead of going west from the current boundary, since that's encroaching so close to the Elton Hills School already, go south from the current boundary. So go across Elton Hills Drive and then head south. We looked at a couple different options there and tried to draw it. Again, these always look goofy because you're trying to make sure that you're not affecting one kid across the street from another. It's not perfect, but we tried to go down to around the Washington School area, over, down Civic Center Drive till you hit the Falwell border. And in that group of kids, there was a substantial number of students that would switch then from Elton to Churchill Hoover, which for some of them, they are closer to Churchill Hoover than they are to Elton Hills anyway. And we are providing transportation. So it did not look like we were impacting walkers at this point, having to start driving now people that were walking with this option. Okay, so this is how it would sort out. Churchill two eighty-six. Elton Hills would go from four eighty-three down to three seventy-five. We'd be pulling out nearly a hundred and eight students out of Elton. And then Hoover up to three twenty-five. At our large schools, very similar because we're going to adjust Bamber and Riverside. Jefferson would have five thirty-four. I think the previous one said five nineteen. The rest are the same. And again, we're still waiting for at least four hundred and fifty-one kindergarteners. As I'll do in a later presentation, we seem to usually get a few more than what we're expecting. But that's what we think we're at right now. In option two, we propose no changes at the middle school boundary or at the high school boundary. So just take that level, those two levels off the table. And then what's next? Again, this was the short-term solution. We've briefly mentioned a couple times now the long-term solution is pay off Century and Riverside, put together the superintendent's task force to make a construction recommendation, and then go out and seek voter approval for building construction funding in either yet this year or in 2019. And then if you're wondering where might we be building, there's three lots right there that could house a elementary school. Not sure if those are the three right ones, but that would be part of the task force to look at that and potentially see maybe there's something else in Northwest we should be considering. But regardless, we don't have any space for a fourth middle school. We'd have to go out and buy land for that. And that's where I think I'm at. Yep, I can pull those up.
We also, using both options, we ran the make, how the makeup of the student population would change as far as free and reduced and EL and I think special education. And we didn't break it down by race, each individual race, but by white and non-white. So how would it impact, how it is currently and how it would impact the particular schools either with option one or option two.
So I'll just go through option one here, the free and reduced changes. So Bamber Valley loses four percent of their free and reduced students. Churchill Hoover would lose three percent. Elton Hills would go up two point three, Gibbs up point nine. I don't need to read all the numbers to you, but you can see we tried to keep the changes so it wasn't that significant one way or the other. Obviously, the most, the one I'm most concerned about would be the Riverside one, jumping up to over seventy percent free and reduced price lunch kids. On English learner, again, we didn't, the proposal doesn't make a lot of change there. Special education percentages, there's not a lot of change. The reason Jefferson would look more obviously is because of the intensive program there. If you take students out, so you're taking numbers out of the denominator and you probably still have the same numerator there, so it makes a higher percentage. And then we did look at the ethnicity over the weekend here to document those numbers. So Bamber Valley, the white students before would be almost sixty percent and then after it'd be nearly sixty-three percent. Churchill Hoover seventy-one point six to seventy-three, so on and so forth. District average is fifty-nine point eight percent white and forty point two percent students of color at our elementary buildings. Because we were proposing so few changes at the middle school and high school, it really doesn't move much of anything on the percentages. So I'll just zip through those pretty quick. Everything's within a tenth of a percent. And then option two, you'll notice that in our free and reduced counts, Churchill becomes a lot more close to the district average. So their free and reduced would go from twenty-eight percent to nearly thirty-eight. English learner, again, Churchill Hoover would pick up a few more there. Special education is largely unchanged as a percentage base. And then on our ethnicity, I think we're a little bit closer to what we would want if we were trying to manipulate it because I think it moves most numbers in the right direction. And I won't put up the middle school, high school since we're not proposing any changes there in option two.
Questions? Comments? Ms. Burkmann.
I have a whole lot of questions and I wrote them down kind of, and I don't know if I can read my handwriting or if my thinking, is it all coherent? So please bear with me. I'll ask just one. So Mr. Carlson, you mentioned early in your presentation that we have buses driving by other schools as children are going to Bamber Valley. And I believe this came up for discussion several years ago when we were having the other discussion with changing the boundaries. So how would those students be affected with? The students who are driving by those schools, who would go to those schools, is there a change for them to not drive by those schools and still go to Bamber Valley?
Yeah, I think the, we were actually, I think, last time we did boundaries, there were two sections that we were busing clear over to Bamber Valley and they were going by one or two neighborhood schools to get to Bamber Valley. We are recommending changing one group out of that. We haven't rerouted, done our routes for next year, so we don't really know exactly. I mean, one of the things that came up is what's going to cost more. Well, I don't know if it is or not. I mean, until we actually do the routing, we won't know for sure what that cost is going to be. But I don't think it's going to be that much of an impact because we are, we have district-wide option schools, so we're busing kids from all over the city to those district-wide option schools. So we have multiple buses going all over that. I don't think that's going to be quite as an issue that it may be thought of. But to specifically answer your question, until we actually do the routes this summer for next year, we really won't know. But we do know that one group, which is one of the two that we talked about last time, wouldn't be going across two different neighborhoods to get to their school.
Oh, may I ask a couple, at least one follow-up?
Just one follow-up.
Okay, have those parents been contacted directly? Do they know that their students might actually have a shift?
We sent a personal email and letter to every family that was going to be impacted by the change and then publicized it open to the public. Now, option two is different. There's different groups affected and we have not, because we didn't know at that time, that was, changes based on what we heard. We made some changes. So if the board would decide they want to do option two, we would still need to have another meeting to invite those parents because it's a different group in some cases that they might have attended, but we don't know for sure. But we did make an effort to invite those families that we knew were going to be impacted by option one.
Ms. Becker.
I have a couple of questions and they're kind of different. So do you have an idea of the number of students that are involved? If we would say, "I'm sorry, we're not doing any exception to attendance" and, you know, whatever, the parents who talked about, you know, the kids going to SAC. And I mean, do we have an actual idea? Do we have any, do we have any curiosity in that number? Do we want to know? Do we want to just, you know, just really trust our parents? I, I'm purely asking. I'm not, I don't have one way that I'm thinking we should go or not. I'm, I'm just saying that I know we've had, you know, and again, you're always going to have people who are in favor of switching and people who aren't the boundaries because in some cases it's better for their kids and other cases it's not. But, you know, just, you know, what do we think about that?
We did, we did look at that. I don't, the software that John uses is, we're able to track an area and it tells you where all those kids go to school. I know we did look at that. I don't think we have that information on hand.
Roughly about fifty students are at Gibbs that are on daycare or relocation, meaning they had moved out of the Gibbs neighborhood. So there's about fifty there.
So that's not a huge number. And what are your thoughts about just not doing anything and just waiting until there's like a really big shift?
Yeah, we actually talked about this and I guess our recommendation would be to do nothing. But I would caution the board that when you do, we do build a new school, you're going to hear the same thing over and over again, same rationale, same research. It's just, and it should happen. I mean, that's just, as I said earlier, parents advocate for their children. If it's going to impact their lives, they're going to, there's going to be emotion involved and that's going to happen. But, but we're also going to have to face those who reach out to us and say, "Why are you not doing something about our crowded school?" So we've heard more on the other end lately, but we have been hearing from the others. I personally don't have a problem with waiting until a new school's open and then you're going to have a lot more people impacted than what we're impacting tonight because it's going to pretty much shake up the entire district and redraw lines all over the place. But just caution the board that that's going to happen, either now or later. I won't use my commercial that I always use. But so we're comfortable with, with doing nothing. We were just trying to address a problem that was being brought to our attention more than once. And if you recall back in, was it fourteen we did boundaries, I think it was? We, at that time, the board said at least every two years, we should look at it and make some adjustments. So when you're a growing district like us, you're going to have to do things like that. Even once you build a new school, eventually you're going to have to change the boundaries from what they are at that time. So it's not something that you can avoid because we're growing. Now, if we weren't growing, then we'd be getting complaints about closing schools. So I'd rather have this argument than, than the other. But, so I guess if you're asking us what our, what our recommendation would be, we would say probably to do nothing, but making sure the board understands that this will come back when we open a new school. It just can become probably more people because more people are going to be impacted.
I mean, I, I thank you for your, for your comments. And I, to me, you know, people maybe could more, you know, find a, find a reason, well, you know, we've built a whole new school, so of course we're going to have to, you know, adjust. So it might be easier for people at that point to say, "Okay, yeah, they built a new school. It's not going to be perfect, so, you know, they're, they're not going to be able to place the school perfectly. So yes, we are going to have to adjust boundaries." And I, I guess I hadn't thought about the elementary age kids who, you know, do have to move, you know, maybe a couple different times. And, you know, so maybe waiting maybe does help them out a little bit. I, I don't know. I, I think, I think Mr. Smith talks about the three elementary schools he went to when he was growing up. So I, I know students, I know students do it and they, you know, you know, they're very successful in their life. So I, I don't know how I feel about that, but I, but I don't know. It's always a hard question to move boundaries.
Yeah, we came across an interesting fact as we were doing this work that we found, I think, a fifth of our students, was it last year? Moved to a different school during the year, a fifth of our students.
I think it was five hundred somethings kids switched in the middle of the year on their own, not because we drew anything, but just five hundred kids, their parents moved them to a different school. So it is happening that people do it on their own, not just because the school district does it.
And, and when we made boundary adjustments in two thousand and fourteen, we, I didn't hear of any, I mean, once the decision was made, it was done. And we didn't hear a lot of that we were hurting kids. The kids that moved seemed to be doing fine. But we understand the emotion of it, so.
Mr. Schlesner.
I think we've done a good job of getting the community's input, but has there been a formal process to get the input of the building ministries and the teachers of the students of the affected schools? At the end of the day, I personally really look to their wisdom of what their thoughts are as it comes to teaching the students.
They had an opportunity to do the thought exchange, just like the parents did. And I don't remember the percentage of it.
Yeah, I would also say that several of the suggestions came from schools that have talked to me, just in passing, about my school's really full, I need more space, I need, you know, this and that. And so those comments get stored away for a time like this and that's partly what we're trying to do as well. So I would say, not formally, but through word of mouth and through different meetings along the way over the last few years, I've heard those comments. And that's partly what you see there.
Ms. Seelander.
Thank you. I have a few. Earliest time a new school would be built and open?
Twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two school year. I would assume passing a vote on the first try, probably in nineteen, and getting the debt issued and an architect to design it and a good contractor to finish it in just over a year's time, so.
Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to address resources. I am an old-school education advocate. And I am thrilled that we have parents who will come before us and speak their mind, especially those with kindergartners. And I'm standing on my little soapbox back here saying, "Please keep engaged. Please don't just come because you think there's a problem, you think it's going to impact your students. Please stay with us and speak for all students." Those who have mentioned resources, we don't have a lot of resources. We can't hire extra paras. We can't hire extra teachers. We can't hire extra mental health professionals and nurses. I know that seems like a really easy solution, but we can't. And so I really want to put that in context that if we decide not to make these adjustments and we do have classes or buildings that are overcrowded, we really can't spread our resources much thinner than they already are. And if you hang with us tonight, in half an hour, John's going to tell us we're cutting more out of our budget really, really soon. And it's a lot and it's going to impact every single kid in this district. I promise you that. I will step off my soapbox. I don't, I don't believe that changing for the sake of changing is necessary at this point. I believe it's important to have these conversations and to look at all sides. I appreciate Director Schlesner asking about the staff and the buildings. I wish they had more of a presence here. I wish we did a specific focus group just for them to tell us, "You're on the other side of that classroom. You're on the front of that classroom. How is this impacting your teaching?" I thank you, John, for your thoughtful presentation and your information. I thank Ms. Nessler and her, her crew who did a Facebook Live because I was at Hy-Vee. I couldn't be here, but I could listen. But parents, please stick with us.
I, I don't have any answers. I do have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm really pleased that, that you and that this district is taking the feedback from parents and others seriously. That during the feedback session, you listened and you reported back. So it's not- So it's not just taking notes, but you use that information and now you're sharing it with the rest of the community. I have been, uh, in the last two or three years to two of the elementary schools. I was invited to two of the elementary schools that'll be impacted by these proposals, invited by staff who said, we're bursting at the seams. We don't have any place to teach anymore. We've got kids in the hallways, we're using closets, help us. It broke my heart. These are amazing teachers, they love their schools, they love their students, but they said, more teachers isn't gonna help because we don't have any more classroom space. The halls are crowded. I love the parents, and that's most of our parents, who say they love their schools, they love their teachers. I think that is wonderful and as a parent, I get that. So this is a tough one. Everybody's experience is different and I will, would never judge another parent and his or her attitude, um, to my own. But I have three kids who went to school in the Rochester Public Schools. They went to three different high schools, same house, boundary changes, neighbors all around us were looking for a cliff, and I'm not sure if they were gonna jump or push school board members off. It's sort of back and forth. My kids grew up and they're relatively sane and, uh, got a good education. You know, you adjust when your kids go from elementary school to middle school. It's a challenge, but you adjust. Again, families are different and different kids have different needs and I understand that. So I'm torn here because we have schools that are ju- they, we just have too many kids in them. It would be easy to just say, let's just let her ride for a few more years and do what we can do. I don't know if that's in the best interest of our students or our staff. And I'm not ready to, um, make a decision at this point. Other comments?
Ms. Becker.
I was just gonna say, this is a briefing item.
Yes.
Still, so, yeah, I, I guess I'm not really ready at this point either. Um, and, you know, just kinda letting, you know, people think about it and, um, you know, looking at option two, I mean, option two is different and, um, you know, thinking about kinda what's been proposed.
Will the district send some notification out to the families who would be affected by option two and weren't affected by option one?
Yep, we can do that. And then, uh, we plan, the presentation that we gave tonight will be on the website as well, uh, 'cause I think at the community meeting, we said that we would share the feedback we got, so, um, that will be posted as well. I, I, I wanna thank this group. They have put, uh, a lot of time and work into doing this, uh, besides doing the other things that they are responsible for and, and, uh, specifically like to thank Heather for, um, she's the one that had to deal with all the social media and, you know, people aren't very nice on social media and it, it, it was disappointing for me that, um, some of the language and names that were used on social media. Uh, I understand this is emotional time for people, but, um, I, I, I just don't think there's a place for that, but I, my hat's off to her 'cause she had to monitor all that and try to respond to things that we could and, um, and I'm thankful for the parents that came in person and it was, uh, um, a very respectful, uh, session and, uh, a couple of the cabinet members were a little concerned about how it may go based on what they were reading on, on social media, but, uh, I, I thought it was a good meeting and we, we got some good feedback and, uh, I thought that meeting went really well. Uh, so, but this group had put a lot of, of time in working on this and, and, um, so I just wanna personally thank all of you guys for everything you've done.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Workman.
Yeah, on, I'm still struggling with whether or not Jefferson is overcrowded because I've heard a lot of information and I would like to see the data. How many students in every section of every class at Jefferson? Because right now, it doesn't make any sense to be moving kids from this school to, that, from Jefferson to another school just to make something else open up in the proximity, which is why, kinda why I asked my first question about, do we still have kids being bused by their schools to go to Bamber Valley? It looks like Elton Hills kids are gonna be bused no matter where they land. Is that correct? I mean, the ones who are affected by the boundary.
In the option two, yes, I think they are being bused up Elton Hills now and they will be bused to a different school.
Um, so I would, and I would also, since I believe that Elton Hills is the most overcapacity, is that correct, of all of our?
They're very high.
It's 150%, I think it was? Okay. I'd also like to see those numbers per section as to, not just, this is how many second graders we have, but in classroom A, we have this many, classroom B, we have this many. And so I can really see the whole, the whole gamble before making, uh, any kind of decisions as to, to move, uh, move students. It appears to me that Elton Hills is probably the school that might need the most attention sooner than the other buildings. Is that something that you would like to stick your neck out and agree with or not agree with or simply say no comment on that, which I'm fine with?
Well, I, I, I would say it's one of the ones that probably we hear the most from staff. Uh, I, I'm assuming probably the ones that you're hearing the most from. As I mentioned earlier, it doesn't make sense to me either to have five vacant classrooms at Churchill Hoover next year either when we're crowded somewhere else. So part of, as I said earlier, it's not just that we believe Jefferson is a little overcrowded, but they're next to Churchill Hoover that's gonna have five open classrooms next year. And it didn't make sense to me to pull kids from, clear over from Elton Hills or Gibbs and move them, bust them clear across to Churchill Hoover. You picked a neighborhood that's close. Uh, so that, that factored in too, the fact that we're gonna have those open classrooms and, um, so it wasn't just that. As we mentioned before, I know last year, a request came across my desk for over $300,000 to build a wall in the basement, 'cause they had classrooms down there. I don't remember what classrooms were down there, but we had a makeshift wall to, to classrooms and we didn't have the money to do that. That was last year, not this year, I get that. And we also have, I don't know what program it is, but there's a program that's on the stage. And that's not a really good place for a classroom, in my opinion. So, um, you have to look at ju- more than just class, how many kids are in classrooms? There's other factors that we considered beside just that, but we can get those, uh, numbers for you.
Ms. Becker.
So do all three, um, Elton Hills, Churchill Hoover, do they all go, feed into JA? No.
Churchill Hoover feeds into Kellogg and into Sentry.
Okay. But Elton Hills?
JA.
Now, when we redrew option two, technically we hit JM and JA neighborhood there, but based on the feedback that we had gotten from the public meeting, we decided not to change that. So that would be an oddity where that portion of Elton Hills then would break away, um, from JA friends and go to Kellogg and then up to Sentry, so.
Ms. Workman.
The other thing that I found particularly helpful, um, and obviously you weren't on the board then, Dr. Marvin, I don't remember if you were either when we did our previous boundary adjustments, was that we put it in the framework and the structure that Dennis Cheeseborough had given us. And to me, that was really, really helpful to see it all on one page, the, the not how, the how, the why nots and, you know, whatever those other categories are. Is there any possibility we can put this into that framework without creating thousands of hours of your staff?
Are you talking about the guiding change document?
Yes, thank you.
Well, if, we'd have to spend time with the board to establish those categories, yes.
I mean, because we had, I don't know if any of those same categories could be used that we had before. I mean, we were talking the last time about, um, having, I hate to say this, having a different choice school on the north and the south end of towns, which, which we're written that.
Yes, you're right. One of, one of the outcomes at that time was to try to make our district-wide option schools more representative of our student population. And the first recommendation was choice, district-wide option schools north, district-wide option schools south. We immediately heard, don't take away our neighborhood schools, so then we changed directions on that. So if you're talking about the guiding change document, only thing I would see, the outcome would be to try to balance out the class, the, the buildings a little bit, which is what we're trying to do. There is a co- a section there to what you can't do while you're trying to compensate what not to do. I mean, we can do that. The only concern I have, if we, uh, push it out too much further, then I don't think we wanna try to, if we do decide to implement changes, we don't do it next year because we're pushing, uh, if you remember at that time, it was about the same time of the year that we did the work, but we did not, the, the changes didn't go into effect until a year later. Uh, so we would probably have to do the same thing if you want us to go back through and work with the board to establish the guiding change document. I don't anticipate the outcome changing. The outcome is to try to alleviate some of the crowdedness at some of our buildings. And as far as the other documents that Dennis presented, so that's exactly the last two sheets that, that, um, John shared with you, how this change would impact special IDL and all that percentage.
Ms. Seelinger.
Yeah, um, I would just like to, uh, return to that piece a little bit, um, just for a little bit of, um, comment, John, uh, or Mr. Munoz, um, about the change in free and reduced price lunch and special IDL. To me, that's, uh, in some ways almost more critical piece than the actual space piece. And so, um, you know, you did bring up a few spots where you thought it's kind of pushing our, our boundaries. Would any of those changes, um, push us into having another racially identified school? Potentially?
No, I think the highest was 2.7, 2.7% increase was the highest change in, in any of that.
Okay. Um, I, I, if we, if we are gathering more information, I wouldn't mind seeing those against the schools that are not impacted, just in terms of their free and reduced price lunch and, um, EL and, uh, demographic information, um, because that's another complicating factor, right? It's the ver- we're not just talking about, um, the number of students in the space, but we're also, we need to be mindful of those numbers as well, in my opinion.
Deborah, are you talking about the last two sheets?
Those two separate sheets.
Yeah, we can get those two and we'll also load them on the website with the presentation.
They're with, they're in Word docs.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Ms. Becker.
Um, when, um, I, I think at this point, a guiding change document is maybe, maybe we've kinda lost opportunity for it on this one, but I do think it would be a good idea. Hopefully we'll be getting in this new school. I mean, I guess it's, I mean, there's, there's still some things up in the air with that.
Right.
But I think at that point, I, I think the changes and the, and the issues will be big enough that I think that, that might be appropriate at that time. And again, at this time, I think maybe we've lost our opportunity, but I do think that that's a really good process to go through changes and I did like that process when we did that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, John. We've had a request for a five-minute recess.
Yes.
So we're going to have a recess at, um, 7:57 PM. 7.02 approval to purchase an articulating wheel loader. This is a briefing item and I think a little less emotional than the last one.
Oh, just wait.
Yes, at this time, I'm gonna invite Scott Sheridan, his deputy director of operations, and Andrew, I do believe is also gonna join him, coordinator of facility services, and to brief us on the front-end loader. And if you remember when Andrew was here a, a while back and kinda shared the 25-year plan to replace equipment and vehicles, this was one of those things that was on that list, so they're here to brief us on that.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Yes, on October 3rd of 2017 is when, uh, Andrew and I brought you the 25-year facility plan for equipment replacement. And on that particular plan was, we were gonna come back and request to add a fifth, they're called articulating wheel loaders, we call them front-end loaders, so we'll keep it simple from now on, front-end loader. And we were gonna add one to our fleet. We currently have four and they're all the same model year, about 2001. And, uh, we use them for a variety of tasks, but mainly for snow removal throughout the winter. And what we have done the past two winter seasons is, uh, due to the expansion of our, the property that we have to clear, we have to be more timely at Mighty Oaks, the old Borough Oak, and now that Mighty Oaks has come online, we have to be more timely to make sure we get that cleared. And now with the expansion of the Hoover parking lot, we're doubling the size of the Hoover parking lot for the addition, uh, we're looking to, uh, it justifies buying this fifth front-end loader to improve the efficiency of our department. With our grounds people and our other staff that worked with snow removal, we have plenty of people that can do it, we just don't have enough equipment to do it in a timely manner. One of my bigger concerns with it is, on a fairly significant snowfall, it takes anywhere from 10 to 12 hours for the group with the equipment we have to go out and remove all the snow. And that is a very long workday and it's usually overnight, so they, those staff members usually work part of the day that day, then they go home for a little while, then they come back and work all night long for 10 to 12 hours to remove, uh, snow. And so it's also a safety issue and if we provide them enough equipment, we can add more staff to get it done in a more timely manner. And that was the justification why, uh, we added that fifth, uh, front-end loader. Like I said, that we have been leasing one for the past two years. Uh, this year's lease, well, we leased for five months, $3,000 a month for a total of $15,000. And as Andrew, who was very good with numbers and figuring all these things out, uh, he, he approached me, he said, you know, it makes more sense for us just to buy one because in 10 years, we're gonna have paid for itself and at the end of those 10 years, that front-end loader's still gonna be worth somewhere around $80,000 to $85,000 in value, whereas if you leased for those 10 years, after 10 years, you have nothing left. And so to us, it was a pretty easy sell, so we're bringing that forward to you. The Office of State Procurement has a local firm, RDO Equipment Company, that's on the, uh, the state contract. And the price for the John Deere 544K front-end loader is $146,619, but we would need a pusher to go with that and that costs about $3,500. The unique part about it is, we currently have that particular model that we're leasing from RDO and per, uh, agreement, they're willing to provide us back 90% of the lease payments that we've been making if we choose to purchase this prior to the end of, help me on this one.
We would have to know by mid-March timeframe. When our lease is up in the middle of April, they will have this machine sold in the open market.
So if we can let them know in a fairly timely manner, they'll grant us back about 90% of our lease applied toward the purchase, so that number that you see there, depending on how many lease payments we've made, will be reduced as well.
Any questions? Ms. Becker.
So how many snowfalls have we had this year?
We have plowed seven times this year with our front-end loaders.
And how many last year?
I don't have the data from last year handy. On average, from a contractor that we've talked to, is they generally talk about 14 snowplows a year. Um, it can be, obviously with weather, we're very highly dependent on that. We could have a great year, um, we could get hammered and be plowing two, three times a week.
So do you use them, like, now for our parking lot here, it's ice? Do you use the same piece of equipment to throw the sand or not? Is that a different piece of equipment?
The sands or salt-spreading equipment is different than the front-end loaders, yeah. But we did do, the front-end loaders were used today and scraped up the salt, or the ice that was.
Slush.
Slush ice, yeah, the fun stuff we had yesterday.
Ms. Becker.
So what else do we do with the loaders?
On the summertime, they get used to move dirt, load mulch, um, some tree products if we need to dig out a stump, uh, miscellaneous grounds work that needs to happen.
So are we using all, so we would be, would we be using all, all five?
No, pri- primarily only one is used in the summer and the other are just shedded until we need them again the next winter.
I'm, the reason why I'm asking, um, obviously is because I'm a little concerned about having $750,000 in equipment that, you know, we use potentially 14 times during the year and that's, you know... And that's, you know, that's just the equipment. That's not the maintenance on the equipment. That's not the overtime of the drivers. It's not just the driver's wages and benefits. And I just, that whole, whole thing is, you know, is a lot of money. So, have you thought about, I mean, can we hire someone to come and plow our parking lots?
We have looked at that, and I do have some rough numbers, going from some bids we got back in the year 2000. Using those, along with some current numbers that we got, you know, from a contractor that we work with on a regular basis, gave us some estimates that we could go on. I was able to take those year 2000 bids, add a little inflation, compare them with the numbers we had got from our contractors, to kind of compare them to the actual bids we had in the past, to come up with a number and real rough estimates. Contracting out, we're looking at approximately $62,000 per snowfall to plow our lots. That is greatly affected by a, that's a one to four-inch snowfall. Going up from that, every two inches up from that is generally a factor of about .4, so you add 40% to that each time. Doing it in-house, figuring that we are spending about $26,000 each time to plow one to four inches. Our costs are going to be a little more static. So, if we have 20 snowfalls in a year, our costs are going to go down per time, because we already have the trucks paid for, the equipment, tractors, loaders are already going to be paid for. We would just have to increase our variable costs, such as overtime, fuel, and salt. If we were to contract something out, their costs are going to go up exponentially every time, because they're, we're going to have to pay their costs each time that it snowfalls.
So, that's typically how, how people contract snow removal, is by, so just per snowfall? So, you don't contract for a season? It's, so like, each snowfall, you find somebody?
From the contractors I've talked to, yeah, they do it by a snowfall, or a personal fall. So, we wouldn't, we would have to write us back if it was something we were interested in contracting out, and depending on how you wrote that, it might be potential that you could write it out for the entire season. Contractors are going to price in worst-case scenario to cover their, cover their costs in that situation.
Is it something that instead of, because you said it was 60-some thousand for all of it. So, what would happen if we would, if we would do half, or if we would, you know, if we have, because again, we have, we have a use for one of the unloaders kind of all year round, basically.
Correct.
But we have four that are just kind of sitting there. So, and again, to me, it just, you know, very little about big equipment. But what I do know is that to make it worth it for an entity to have those really big pieces of equipment is you have to use them like, all the time. And so, I, this is a hard one for me to say, to say yes to. I, it's just, it's just a big chunk of money, and it, and seems like, I mean, is there a market for us to be renting, I mean, if we're owning these? I mean, can we rent them out in the summer to a different entity to, you know, because it seems pointless for them to be sitting there.
That's an excellent point. It's something we could look into. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Schlesner?
So, your number is $60,000 for the entire district, but the justification for the new front-end loaders, Mighty Oaks, and expanded Churchill Hoover. So, what would the cost be just to hire out Mighty Oaks and Churchill Hoover?
We've also added since 2001, when, since we started plowing all of our district sites in-house, we've also added ALC, FSC, and Gibbs since 2001 to our plowing routes. We have taken off some real small lots, such as Gage East and Golden Hill, but much smaller square footage than we have added to our routes.
But in answer to your question, we can certainly get the numbers to bring that back. One of the benefits of having our own equipment and our own in-house doing it is it gets done when it's supposed to get done. And if, I mean, if we have to call our 15 people in to get it, make sure that when the doors open in the morning at 7:00 AM or 6:30, when our maintenance staff gets there, it's done and it's ready to go. One of the, my concerns with a contractor is, on a really heavy snowfall, is that can be a guarantee that they're going to have our buildings ready to go and open. I mean, we could write it in the contract, but what happens if one of their front-end loaders break down, or something else comes up, or they overextend themselves? There's a lot of variables there. When you compare this, and I'm, I completely respect where you're coming from, because we have, we anticipated this discussion, and that's why he has his numbers. But when you compare this to, let's say, the garbage truck, that was more of a 50, you know, half of one, six, six of another. And so, this one seems a little more skewed to our side because of, he's going on a one to four-inch snowfall. You get them really big, heavy snowfalls, and then he said it exponentially goes up. And so, if we're saving half the cost from contracting every time it snows, I mean, the numbers, we just did a rough estimate, I think, for a year based on, I think, 10 or 11 snowfalls, and...
Was $873,000.
For contracting.
Approximately to contract out snow removal.
And then our costs were?
$367,000.
$367,000, so.
I think besides, I mean, I know right now, the way, we knew it now, when the kids start showing up at the high school, it's going to be clear, because our people, if that means they're out at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning doing it, they're doing it. And then the other thing, to me, another way to look at not using the trucks year-round, they're going to last longer. If I'm using them year-round, just like my car, if I drive it all the time, I'm putting more miles, more wear and tear on it, there's going to be more cost to keep it up. Whereas, if I'm not driving as, as much, I would think I would get more years out of that than I would if I used it all the time as well, so.
Ms. Workman?
I, I may have a series of questions depending on the responses. So, currently, we own four of these, and we are leasing one. Is that correct?
Yes.
How long have we been leasing the one?
This is our second, second winter season.
Okay. So, we're looking at the difference, I was just thinking, if we've been doing it for four or five years, that if we used all the money that we had for leasing, we would essentially be owning a piece of equipment that had already been used for a number of years. But since we're relatively new in the process, then that doesn't seem to be an issue. Do you have, so you don't have, really have any idea of how much they might reduce the cost by, but it would be less than the $150,000 that's proposed here? Is that correct?
We would get 90% of the 50, $15,000 would go towards the purchase price.
Okay, good. It's kind of like kids when they rent a musical instrument from one of our music stores.
Yeah.
So much can go to the purchase of either that instrument or a different one. Thank you.
Unless you can guarantee that we're not going to have any snow, we have, we have to do this, I think. You know, we're going to have snow. We can't have school if we don't have those lots cleared out. And they have to get cleared out in the middle of the night most of the time. And we have to do them virtually all at the same time. I mean, we, I'm sure that the operators are going all night long until early morning hours. I don't like spending the money on this, but then I don't really like snow either. I think it's one of those things we just have to do. And it seems to me that you've cut a good deal for this particular piece of equipment. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Schlesner?
I was curious on what the timeline is for replacement of the other four pieces as they're getting older.
On the 25-year replacement plan that we brought forward back a few, a number of months ago, we were looking at starting to replace the rest of them starting next fiscal year, and cycling through those other four. I did a cost analysis on them, and with our, we get exceptional government pricing on this heavy equipment over private contractors. Our payback by keeping a newer fleet and guaranteed trade-in values on low-hour, newer, late-model machinery, we have very good trade-in values, making it very attractive to keep a modern fleet of these. Essentially, we would eliminate our maintenance on a front-end loader to zero if we were to trade them off every five to seven years. We would basically have an oil change on it over that, over the timeframe that we would use the machine.
Will there be additional questions or information you want before we're ready to vote on this? Yes, there will be.
Well, I would like to know what it would cost just to have someone plow like the Churchill Hoover and, what was the other one?
Mighty Oaks.
Mighty Oaks, sorry.
For a reference, we did get an estimate for Sentry, didn't we?
We did for Sentry. They estimated us about $3,300 for a one to four-inch snowfall.
We can get those other numbers for those two particular schools, if that's what you're looking for. So, that was Mighty Oaks and Hoover?
Hoover.
I think Mighty Oaks would be interesting, because they're out there. That'd be a time saver.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
7.03, approval of boiler bids for Hoover Indoor Air Quality Project. Again, a briefing item.
Yes, Mr. Sheridan will brief us on this item.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening, Scott.
A quick background on this one. This is for the Hoover Early Childhood Edition and the Hoover Indoor Air Quality Project, which was approved on August 1st. We obtained the certificates of participation and the general obligation bonds for these two individual projects. We hired CRW architects, along with Knutson, as the architect, and Knutson Construction as the construction manager. On September 5th, you approved the Phase 1 bids. On November 21st, I brought you the Phase 2 bids, and in that package was bid package 23A for the boilers, and I had pulled that one out. And it's, the explanation that I gave you at that time was, we felt, based from the construction management aspect who was overseeing the project for us, he thought that, that $200,000, $500 for the two $6,000, or $6 million BTU boilers was a little high. And their thought process was, let's go back to the design, the engineer company that's working with our designers, and see if we can reduce the number, or increase the number of boilers, reduce the BTU outputs, to make them more efficient, more redundancy, and to see if we can save some costs. And so, you rejected that bid on the original bid package 23 on January 16th. On January 17th, we put out again for another 23A bid package, and this was for the three, 3 million BTU boilers. And when we got the bids back, we had one, one bid from RM Cotton Company, and their bid for the 3, $3 million BTU boilers was $167,210, which is a savings of $33,290 from the original bid package 23A.
Questions? Ms. Selinger?
Mr. Sheridan, were you surprised there was only one bid?
No, I wasn't. We have a pretty strict specification, because we like to keep our boilers fairly similar throughout all our projects. It improves the efficiency, the maintenance, keeping parts on hand, that kind of thing. So, RM Cotton has provided some in the past. So, I wasn't surprised with only one.
Ms. Workman?
This is just an observation. You know, we're so conditioned to think that the larger the package, it's really the better deal. Although, I've noticed in the last 15 years or so, grocery shopping, that is definitely not true. So, I'm, I'm very happy that you've got this alternative bid that saves the district some money. So, thank you for your efforts on that.
Well, the effort really, or the thanks really goes to our construction manager as agent, because they're the ones that are overseeing the project and brought it to us. So, we can't take credit for this one, but, but thank you.
Mr. Schlesner?
How's the project going in general?
Going excellent, actually, and it's, well, on time. They have all the interior floor, concrete floor poured. They're doing framing inside right now in the addition piece, so everything's right on schedule.
Would you prefer to have this approved sooner rather than later?
Yes, there is some lead time for the boilers, and we're getting to the point where they need to get them ordered, so that they're here on hand when the IEQ project starts. So, if possible, it would be nice to move it to action.
So, moved? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been moved to action. Resolution, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the boiler bid package 23A from RM Cotton in the amount of $167,210 for the Early Childhood Edition and Indoor Air Quality Project at Hoover Elementary.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.04, approval of bid package 34A for traffic light at Hoover Elementary Early Childhood Edition. This is a briefing item.
Mr. Sheridan will also brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
This is a request to approve bid package 34A, and this is for the traffic light at Hoover Elementary Early Childhood Edition and the IEQ project. And this has, this is in relation to what I just described in the last briefing regarding the boilers, as far as this project. As part of this project, the City of Rochester, the planning and zoning mandated that, based on the increased size of the parking lot, now that we're doubling the size of the parking lot, increasing the traffic and the amount of people that, or parents that are going to be coming in ingress and egress out of that parking lot. And it's a fairly busy four-lane road of Elton Hills Drive that they would pull out onto. Their request was to take the traffic light that's currently there, which is only serving as a pedestrian crossing at the top of the hill, take that down and move it down to the entrance to the parking lot, which would allow a trip wire to be put in, so that when the traffic's coming out, it would trip the light, and they'd be able to make their turnout. It would also improve the access to Elton Hills Drive for, I believe it's Norseman Court on the other side of that intersection that's a cul-de-sac, and allow those, the citizens that live in that neighborhood to easily pull out on Elton Hills as well. We were in negotiations with the City of Rochester, and we pointed out that, because of that benefit to Norseman Court as well, that we thought, well, maybe they'd like to contribute to this particular light, because there is some benefit to the citizens as well. And they were very benevolent to us on that. And they came back and offered us a contract that has been signed by our board, but it's now in the City of Rochester's hands. In that contract, it hasn't been signed yet that I know of, but in that contract, they offered to pay for about half of what the cost of the traffic light would be, to remove the old one and put the new one in. And so, when I, we went out for bids, we had to do all the bid package, do all the bidding. We put that out at, in January, at the end of January, and on February 14th, the low bid for the traffic light was from Winkles Electric for $218,868. And like I stated before, with that contract with the city, if they can follow through with it and sign it, we're going to see a significant reduction in costs. It was $21,000 to design the traffic light. There's a city inspection fee that the city charges us to put this light in. It's a little over $17,000. They're even willing to waive about half of that as well back into the project. And so, by my rough estimate calculations, they're going to wind up paying us about $138,000 back out of that $218,868, when you add in the design costs that aren't there and their permit fee. So, it's a very, it's to our favor if, if everything goes through like it might. And it's, when we initially funded the project, we anticipated we'd have to pay that full amount for this traffic light. to pay that full amount for this traffic light. And so that, that particular savings will go right back into the project. And with the savings from the boiler, you know, we're, I know we were over budget originally, but we're gradually reducing that down as we go here. And so, like I said, the Winkles Electric amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, but you can expect to have a reimbursement from the city, hopefully in the near future.
Questions? Ms. Workman?
This is a, a technical question. I just refreshed my page, but I'm not seeing those attachments. Is it just me? The attachments that you referenced. Attachment B and C.
I had them earlier, but I lost them as well.
A, B, and C.
They were in there. I, I've lost them as well for some reason.
Yeah, I just refreshed my page.
I just had to re-sign in so I can get something with the server. So you might have to re-sign in.
Is there a particular one you're looking for that?
Well, I was just.
There's one. There it is.
So, if I may. So the total of this traffic light is the two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, and it might be reduced from that should the City of Rochester decide they're going to chip in?
Yes, that two-hundred-and-eighteen, eight-sixty-eight is for the laboring materials. But there's also a twenty-one thousand dollars in design that we've already paid for our designer to design it. And then the city has their inspection fee of eight percent, which is seventeen thousand, five-hundred-nine dollars to oversee. And of those three that I just mentioned, the city will donate back half of that. And I just found my number. It's a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars that the city would pay back to us once they sign that contract, out of that two-hundred-and-eighteen, eight-sixty-eight plus our design and inspection fee. So half.
Do we have any other kinds of projects like that with the city? Or have we had recently that you might remember off the top of your head?
I have never had to deal with one with a traffic light like this.
Okay, but, okay. Is this something, then, that the Rochester City Council has to approve, or does this just happen internally?
I do not know. I don't know. I can find out.
I did a little bit of groundwork prior to all this stock. I mean, I've talked to some council members, and they actually volunteered to share the costs with us because they were the ones mandating that we do that. But I would assume it's probably going to have to be formally approved by the council. But I'm not too concerned because it was actually their idea. They suggested that they should help share the cost of that since they're making us do it.
I, I'd just like to say I really appreciate all the different kinds of partnerships that we can have, and certainly, a number of our partnerships, potential partnerships between the city and the school district could be beneficial to both government entities. So I'm, I'm very happy, even though they're requiring us to do this, that they're still willing to share some of the costs. So thank you. Thanks, Mike.
I had a question, but first I, I would like to point out the irony of having a designer for a traffic light. Because we probably could get a kindergartner to draw the picture. Sorry. It's getting late, folks, and this is what we have to deal with, the school board, right? Will there still be a crossing guard?
We haven't had that discussion. That's an interesting question. I will check into that and find out. I imagine we probably would.
Yeah, I don't see why, just because we moved, and we have one now. I don't know why we wouldn't just keep the same one.
And again, on this item, Mr. Sheridan, sooner rather than later?
Yes, interestingly enough, this is, this is, there is a lead time on this particular item, and we really need to have it in place by the fall of, you know, in August. So yes, if possible, if it could be moved to action, it'd be greatly appreciated.
It's all moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Five Thirty-Five accepts the bid from Winkles Electric in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars for bid package thirty-four A for the traffic light for the Hoover Early Childhood Edition.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven point oh five, notice of school board election. This is a briefing item.
Yes, we're going to let Mr. Sheridan have a seat. And now, Mr. Carlson, the Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on a few items.
All right. Good evening, school board. And tonight, I'm here to tell you about an upcoming election. I don't know if I should be excited or not, because I don't want you to take it the wrong way, but four of you are up for elections. So Directors Two, Four, Five, and Six expire on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. That would be Director Smith, Director Workman, Chair Marvin, and Director Becker. So we need to open up a filing period on May twenty-second, and we need to hold it open till five PM on June fifth. There is a holiday in there. For anyone that's interested in coming down to our office, we are open eight to four forty-five normally. On the last day, we'll be open till five. This resolution just calls for all the details there to be executed and for us to put it in the newspaper and, and make sure that the public is aware that there is a filing period. They need to be timely and pay a two-dollar fee to sign up to run for school board. If there are more than two people when you come in, you have to pick which seat you're running for. And if there's more than two people per seat, then there's a primary election in August for that. And I believe that date is around August fourteenth, approximate. Yep. And then the general election would be November sixth.
Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I'd just like to make the comment because inevitably, the community is confused, and I can understand in that everyone votes for a candidate for every seat. These are not geographically designed like the city council seats or our state offices, so.
That's correct. You just have to figure out which one you want to run for, but as voters, we get to elect all of them.
Other questions?
Move this to action? Second.
Do we need to move it to action?
Yeah, it's a briefing item.
Oh, okay.
No, we don't.
I just thought we were, I mean, there's no choice. We have to do this.
It has to be approved by law.
Well, I guess the alternative, if we don't approve putting it in the paper and all that and calling the election, there'll be three of you next January, so.
I just didn't know, think we had to, I mean, we have to just read it. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And here's the resolution. And buckle up. Be it resolved that the school board election of Independent School District Five Thirty-Five, Rochester, Minnesota, be held Tuesday, the sixth day of November twenty eighteen, between the hours of seven AM and eight PM, for the purpose of electing to the school board one person for the position of Director Two, one person for the position of Director Four, one person for the position of Director Five, and one person for the position of Director Six, each for a term of four years. And be it further resolved that the period for filing for the Office of Director of the School Board, Independent School District Five Thirty-Five, shall begin at eight AM on Tuesday, May twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and close at five PM on Tuesday, June fifth, twenty eighteen. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the Business Services Office, Room One Twenty-One, Edison Building, and the two-dollar filing fee paid prior to five PM on Tuesday, June fifth, twenty eighteen. And be it further resolved that the notice of said filing dates be published in the Post Bulletin, the official newspaper of the district, at least two weeks prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy and candidacy. And be it further resolved that the notice of said filing dates be in substantially the following form. Notice of filing dates for election to the School Board, Independent School District Five Thirty-Five, Rochester, Minnesota. Notice is hereby given that the period for the filing affidavits of candidacy for Office of School Board Members, member of Independent School District Five Thirty-Five, shall begin at eight AM on Tuesday, May twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and shall close at five PM on Tuesday, June fifth, twenty eighteen. The general election shall be held on Tuesday, November sixth, twenty eighteen, to fill Position Two for a term of four years, Position Four for a term of four years, Position Five for a term of four years, and Position Six for a term of four years. Candidates may not file for more than one position. Ad affidavits of candidacy are available Monday through Friday from the Business Services Office, Room One Twenty-One, Edison Building, Six Fifteen, Seventh Street, Southwest, Rochester, Minnesota. The filing fee for this office is two dollars. A candidate for this office must be an eligible voter, must be twenty-one years of age or more, unassuming office, must have been a resident of the school district from which the candidate seeks election for thirty days before the general election, and must have no other affidavit on file for any other office at the next ensuing general election. The affidavits of candidacy must be filed in the Business Services Office and the two-dollar filing fee paid prior to five PM on Tuesday, June fifth, twenty eighteen.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would anybody like me to reread that? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point oh six, enrollment projections. Information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will provide this information for us.
All right. Welcome, or good evening again. I will go through this very quickly. Yikes, what time is it? We'll go through this quickly because we've been through a lot of this data in the study session, the public meeting. We've been talking more in context of capacities. But this is our standard report we give you once a year on enrollment projections. We're not going to talk about building capacities, boundary adjustments, anything fun like that. We're just going to go through some high-level numbers. So this is just a, a bar chart by elementary, middle school, high school, showing that we are at about eighty-three-hundred students in elementary. In October twenty thirteen, we're up to eighty-six-hundred. In middle school, we're at thirty-five-hundred. We're now up to thirty-eight-hundred. And in high school, we're at forty-nine-hundred, almost five thousand, and now we're over fifty-four-hundred. The five-year projection going forward is very flat in the elementary level, which contradicts other statements I've been making as we've been talking about capacity, but I'll explain why. We're assuming a flat birth rate. So we're just assuming the same kind of numbers of kids are going to be born and that they will be entering kindergarten. It does not account for anything related to DMC or more people moving to the area, more jobs. It's just straight up on birth records, trying to get a sense of where we're at as a community today and then. We know that our middle schools will grow a little bit because of bigger class sizes. Our biggest class size right now is fourth grade. They're going to be in sixth grade in a couple of years, so we're going to hit that four-thousand marker probably, or very close to it. And then our high schools, again, they're going to push up, and we're going to be over six thousand students in high school. Just historically, how we've tried to figure out how many kids to expect, earlier I was talking about, we think there's still four-hundred-and-fifty-one kindergartners, and that's just strictly based on how many kids were born in the year twenty thirteen. There were two-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-three births in Olmsted County. If we kind of look back at our historical patterns, about sixty percent of those babies, we expect to enroll in the kindergarten this fall, and so that's why we're expecting one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eight. And you can kind of see that number's pretty flat going forward. So this is our chart on elementary enrollments. If we kind of just hold birth rates flat, I know when we've been talking, I've been showing one where it kind of goes up at a steeper climb. That's just if we add a hundred kids a year, like we have been over the last five years. We're going to grow faster than what this chart's suggesting. And then middle school, again, it's going to kind of hit that four-thousand, but any growth in elementary is going to push into middle school, and then the same thing's going to happen in high school. You can kind of see that's already going to happen, just with the kids we have today in elementary and middle school. We're kind of going through one of those upticks right now in enrollment. Just some data on the number of kids in the community that go to school. This is where we kind of look to see what is going on out there. The red bar is the students that are enrolled in non-public, so those are the private school kids. That number's been declining. It was twenty-seven-hundred ten years ago, now it's at twenty-two-hundred. But where we've seen growth outside of Rochester Public Schools is in the charter schools. That's the green bar. It was three-fifty-seven up to six-thirty-five. And then the purple chart is homeschool, and that's been fairly flat between four-hundred to six-hundred students all those years. Okay, this chart's probably a little bit hard to read, depending on how close you're sitting to the screen, but I'll just highlight a couple lines on it. The very top line, dark blue, is the number of students each year who live in the boundaries but choose to go to another public school. And a public school can mean a charter school or could mean Byron, Stuartville, Dover Yoda, Pine Island. Those are the common ones where students go. If you look at the orange line, it's about the third from the bottom. Those are the number of kids that don't live in our boundaries but choose to come here. So those are the Pine Island kids that are coming here, Stuartville, Byron, Dover. We exchange kids, and that's the number that comes. The second line from the top is kind of just the net difference. So the number of kids out minus the number of kids in, you can see that over time, that number has been increasing. That just means more kids who live here are choosing to go to a different district. That's not a bad thing, as Superintendent Munoz has commented before. The difference there is about fifteen-hundred kids right now. We don't know where we would put those fifteen-hundred kids. What effect it's having on our surrounding communities, if you pay attention to newspaper and media, Pine Island, Byron, Stuartville, they've all had to build buildings, so their taxpayers are putting up new buildings to house some of our kids and their own. So here's the top five districts where students are going to. The top one is a public charter school, Rochester Math and Science Academy. We lost three-hundred-and-forty students to there. And then Stuartville, two-ninety-eight, Dover Yoda, two-seventy-six, Byron, two-fifty-nine, Pine Island, one-seventy-five. The top five districts where we get students, Pine Island number one at one-twenty-one, Stuartville fifty-two, and that kind of drops off from there. Just kind of the racial makeup of students. So our white students were about eleven thousand, and they're still about eleven thousand. So we've seen growth in our minority numbers in our non-white students. This is just trying to show the accuracy of our projections. So the zero percent is kind of the line going right across the middle. And so the blue line is just trying to show plus or minus how far have we been off when we give you this projection compared to fall. And that number averages about zero-point-nine percent. So we're estimating about eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-two students next year. We're hoping that we're within one percent of that number either way. The red line is just kind of showing five years earlier, and that number is usually, you know, plus or minus three and a half percent on average. But you can definitely tell we've been a little bit more off the red line, so it's peaked up to the six, seven percent range. That just means we've been getting more students than what we thought we were going to get five years ago. And I talked, talked about that last week, how we have a thousand more students today than what we thought we were going to have five years ago. So there's value in doing these enrollment projections, but you can still miss on them. You can still grow faster than what you're planning on.
Well, we're missing on the right end. I'd rather miss getting more than we projected than losing more than we projected.
Yep. So that's the end of my presentation on enrollment projections.
Ms. Becker?
So you talked about, so do we have the, the capability of looking at our incoming kindergartners? And see how many were like our, our birth kids in our area, and then how many other extras? But I guess the extras are coming in all the time, though, aren't they?
Right, right. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but you'd be surprised at the number of students that move in, move out in a given year. It's in, it's over a thousand each way. It's probably over two thousand each way, just move-ins, move-outs of the community, so.
Every year?
Mm-hmm.
A lot.
Yeah. It was, I, I was very surprised at the numbers myself, yeah.
Can I ask one other question?
Yeah.
So with the, like, the elementary, it said early childhood to fifth grade?
Right.
So how many kids are, so our early childhood is getting bigger, correct?
Correct.
So how is, I mean, ultimately, it doesn't change anything with how many students we have in, in our elementary schools, but do we always account for early childhood, or when did we start counting them?
Yep. We've, we've had the early childhood numbers within the elementary numbers for as long as I've been around and looking at the data. It would It would probably be helpful now to segregate them out, because we'll have the Mighty Oaks facility and the Hoover Early Learning School facility where they'll primarily, that's where they'll be, so they won't be mixing into the other buildings as much.
Senator.
Quite a fine question. You use verse in Olson County, and we have to use the county because we don't have Rochester City, correct?
That's correct, yep. So, yes, within that number, there are kids that live in Byron, Stuartville, wherever.
Do we include anything from Wabashaw? Probably not, because it's such a small chunk that affects our population.
You're correct on that. We do not grab the data from Wabashaw.
I mean, I can't imagine that it's significantly statistical.
As we were reviewing the data for the Jefferson Boundary Switch Option 2, there's 40, 50 kids affected in all of that square mile area, so it's definitely not where the majority of our population's coming from.
Anything else? 7.07 five-year general fund financial forecast, another information item.
Well, I know this is a little bit out of our normal routine. This is a little sooner than we bring back a five-year projection, but we recently came across some not real exciting news that is impacting our overall budget, and it's tied to special education and mainly special education programs, especially in charter programs. We are looking at the need to reduce almost $2 million out of next year's budget, and that's going to have an ongoing impact. And so, we thought we would bring that to your attention, and when we do eventually bring a budget to you in May, you're going to see that there are going to be some reductions in there to try to make the budget balance, and we thought it would be good to bring ahead of time why that is and show you how it plays out for the next five years. So, I'm going to turn it over to John.
All right. So, our financial forecast, we bring this to usually two times a year, and it guides our kind of long-term plan, make sure we're setting the next year's budget. That's the most important one to get right, and then gives us a guide, a roadmap for the future as to what we need to be considering for maybe asking for more money from the voters or cutting money from the expense side. This is a kind of a brief interim update to the last one we did officially on December 12th, because it includes data we learned on January 10th that was not in our favor. So, this is where we were in December 12th. Just draw your attention to the bottom line. That's our fund balance. We, by board policy, need to keep that number at 6.0 or higher. We're kind of clicking along. We thought we'll be fine. We can keep what we have this year, the next year. We didn't foresee any major cuts coming. And I want to brief you a little bit on what happened in the special ed. Now, this is an example. This is not real numbers for Rochester. I'm going to give that to you next, but I just want to give you a little tutorial on how the special ed aid works. So, consider two public school districts. One's an independent school district like us, and one's a charter school located within our district. Each of us could spend $1 million a year on special education. That's the top line there. We can reasonably expect about 65% of that money back from the state. We were promised 100% of it. That's how special ed was put into place, that we should get 100% of the money back, but that doesn't happen. There's just not enough money at the state to go around. So, each school district plans for $650,000. That leaves a cross subsidy, that's the amount that the general fund has to subsidize, of $350,000 unfunded. So, Rochester Public Schools, that's one reason we have the operating referendum, is because we can apply some of those funds to special education. We can use part of our state aid formula to apply to that. But the charter school, also a public school, doesn't have that ability to set a property tax levy. What they do is, because they're accepting students that live within our district boundaries, they send us a tuition bill, and we have to pay them their unreimbursed costs. And so, that $350,000 deficit basically gets transferred back to the public school, and that comes out of the state aid reimbursement. And now, the public school is short $700,000, and the charter school is basically made whole. They're okay. Fast forward to Rochester's reality, $44.8 million spent on special ed. There is some federal reimbursement. There is some third-party billing reimbursement, but it leaves a deficit of $38.6 million. The state aid formula, as it states there in kind of the darker blue, promised is about 65%. It's more complicated than that, but just say about 65%. We actually didn't plan to receive 65%. When we closed the books last year, we were assuming 63% of the money would come in. We wanted to be a little more conservative. It's just the way it rolls. So, we were planning for $24,450,000 back. What we have learned on January 10th is that we're only going to get about $23,610,000. So, two things happened. The state ran out of money. That's about half of the 840,000, so they're short. They told us $32 million, and they're just taking it off the top of every district in the state. So, $32 million is being spread around proportionately across all districts are feeling that pain. And then, the other piece is the charter school tuition. We had two charter schools within our district that many students go to, and we needed to make them whole, so to speak. So, through the tuition billing process, we owed them another 400 and some thousand dollars that we didn't know back in September 15th. They weren't required to report their final costs until November 30th. So, we were stuck now with an $840,000 deficit that applied to last school year. So, we've lowered our projections for revenues to account for this. That's the only thing we've changed. We've not done a detailed dive into our expenditures yet to see, is there any hope that we're underspending the budget? We just reduced revenue off the top, because we know that's a for certain, the revenues are not going to be what we thought they were. And next year, 2018-19, we would be violating board policy if we keep spending what we're spending. We would drop a little 6%. So, we need to make a correction. We need to deal with that. So, the only thing that's changed in our forecast is we're expecting $1.7 million less in aid in the 17-18 school year, 1.1 million less in 18-19. We've kind of run the formulas now. We've lowered our expectations from the state. We've worked with them to kind of get a better understanding of what they think is reasonable to be reimbursed, and so that's why we're making these reductions. And so, basically, left unaddressed in 18-19, we violate your policy, and we'd be at 5.6%. Then we go to 4.9, 4.6. So, it's not good news. We need to make up some cuts, as Superintendent said. Approximately $2 million is my recommendation, because we've got to deal with money we didn't get for 16-17. We're already halfway through 17-18, and we're going to be short money there, so that's the 1.7 million. We'll be short next year, and they'll just be short from there on out. So, that's why we're recommending a $2 million reduction in spending for next year. And so, we'll be working with our principals on that in their upcoming staff meetings and addressing that.
I will add, too, that we, we're not the only district that's having this issue. Any, especially any district that has a public charter school, that has a high special ed population, they're experiencing the same thing. We are in conversation and working with Duluth, and St. Paul, Minneapolis, and Red Cloud.
St. Cloud.
I get that mixed up. Red Cloud, Iowa. St. Cloud, and trying to work together with, come up with some kind of bill to help us. And one of the things that that group's working on is, right now, when there's an IEP meeting at one of the charter schools, we're not there. They just send us the check, we pay, we have a bill, we have to pay for it. So, one of the bills that we're working with this group is, we want to be at the table when you have the IEP meeting. Since we're paying, we should be involved in that conversation. And then, we met with Senator Nelson probably a couple of weeks ago, and trying to find a way to address, I think it's a formula issue, on how that's set up, and how we and other districts like us have to make up the difference for charter schools, and that would be a change in how the formula works. So, Senator Nelson has suggested that we get the same group together, and we'll do a conference call with her and try to come up with some kind of bill to try to address that end of it as well, see if we can get that formula somehow changed, because it's going, you know, as John showed, it's going to have an ongoing impact moving forward. As their cost increases, that's just going to be a heavier burden on us moving forward. So, we're trying to attack the legislative angle as well to try to address this, but that's where we're at so far.
So, going on Senator Nelson's thought about changing the formula, so have you, John, looked at, you know, like, the actual costs of the charter school that we're reimbursing, and what would happen if all of those students were like Rochester Public School students? And because, to me, it's like, well, is the, I mean, is the state, because it seems like they're, I mean, I don't, I don't under, I can't, I mean, the formula's so weird anyway, but it seems like they're like double paying almost. I mean, because if, like, we're having to pay the charter school, and the state is paying, but what would happen if, so like, what would it cost, I mean, cost if all the students were Rochester? And, you know, that we've broken it out between two schools. So, I mean, do the numbers?
Yeah, I think we talked about trying to figure out what we, what our cost is per special ed student, which is a little difficult, because depending on amount of services they get. But one of the, that's why I think the two are closely related, because if, you know, if I'm not paying the bill, I can put a lot of things in an IEP that would, might be very appealing to a parent that we would not offer here and can't offer financially. I mean, for example, class sizes, they're maybe 1 to 4 or 6, and we're 1 to 12. I mean, just, that's just one example. So, if we can be at the table, not that they, we're still one person amongst the whole group, but, so I think they're kind of closely related to that. But we did talk about trying to calculate what, what their cost per student is compared to what ours is, and it's not going to be apples to apples because of the amount of services that, that each kid gets. We do know, we do have some kids that may, that go there, get an IEP written, and then, oh, well, they can't meet that need, so then they come back to us, well, it's in the IEP, so we have to meet that need because it's in there. So, it's, it's, there's a lot of working parts, but we're hoping some of it we can address through legislation, because it's, I mean, just the cross subsidy itself is an issue for district, but then that just complicates it even more.
So, is this new?
No, we've always been responsible for our kids who get special ed services in another district, just like we bill back other districts, you know, I was just pulling up the report quick. You know, for example, we billed Cass and Manorville $84,000 for serving some of their kids with special ed needs. But what we're paying out is far greater, and what's happened over the last year is that a newer charter school opened and took on a whole bunch of new costs, took some of the students, and then we got the bill for it.
So, I'm going to be uncharacteristic with blood. It sounds like the charter school sort of has a, or can have sort of a blank check on whatever it provides to its special education students that we have to pay, whereas with our students, we can't send a blank check to the state to pay, which would be nice, or to anyone else to pay. That's my first observation. The second question I have is, then, do the public students who attend public charter schools, do they also get the state aid plus referendum money?
They do not get referendum money, but they do get the state aid. And I think that's why the argument has been, too, is that, well, of course, we can afford to pay for our kids, because we've got referendum. But we're not getting referendum on those kids, because they're not in our district either. But they're just saying, because you have the ability to tax our taxpayers more, we should be able to afford it.
Well, and then the other piece of that, too, is that people forget, some of them, that the purpose of a referendum is to provide opportunities for students over and beyond what their basic education is. And over the last, it's my turn to be on the soapbox. And over the last, I don't know, 20, 30 years, it has been that referendum, referenda are used to pay for basic services for students that the state has not met its obligation to provide. Done.
Yeah, I, I told Senator Nelson when she was down that we would give back our voter-approved operating referendum if we could levy for our unreimbursed special education costs, because we would come out with more revenue that way. We wouldn't need an operating referendum if we could levy for the unreimbursed special education. So, that's another flaw, I think, in the law.
Or if the state.
Or if the state paid what they were supposed to or what promised, yes.
Ms. Selinger. I, I like it better when you're bringing this good news, John, but thanks, Emily. I appreciate, Mr. Munoz, the effort to work together with other districts who have this problem, and I think it flared up a little bit in Duluth before here, and again, reading online comments, or, you know, why he knows what's happening, not very kind. I appreciate the two-pronged approach to the, to addressing the IEP issue and addressing the formula issue. But realistically, we are going, the legislature opened?
Today.
Today! And we know they move like molasses. So, even if things were able to be changed on either one of these fronts, the earliest that we would see any relief is another year.
Potentially for next school year, yes, but we might not know that before we need to bring you an approved budget, or, maybe we'll have an idea there, but we need to operate now under the certainty that we're, we need to make budget cuts.
Plus, which, this is not, this is not a funding year, it's a bonding year.
Yeah, like I said, we just wanted to bring this to your attention, because we didn't want to surprise you when we bring the budget showing a $2 million reduction, and when people start expressing their concerns for us reducing $2 million, it's not a shock to you why, but this explains why we're looking at doing that.
Yeah, I'd also like to remind voters that when we put forth the referendum, that it was barring any unforeseen circumstances, and this is something that was, to this magnitude was not foreseen, and we have zero control over it, except during an election year.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3, I make a move, motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions, and immediately following, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.03 subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
Is there a second? They moved in seconded. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
John, if you have anything?
We are reconvening at 10:02 p.m. 10:02 p.m. 7.10 Resolution Disciplining an Employee. This is an action item. I'll read the resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, Number 535, Rochester Public Schools, as follows. One, the School Board hereby approves the letter setting forth the discipline and the basis or cause for the discipline. Two, the School Board Chair is directed to sign the letter on behalf of the School Board. Three, the District Superintendent or his designee is directed to serve the approved letter on the employee and to place a copy of the letter in the employee's personnel file. Four, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13.43 subdivision 2, the specific reasons for the proposed discipline, the nature of the proposed discipline, and the letter are private. the letter are private data on the employee until final disposition of proposed disciplinary action. Is there a second?
Second.
I need somebody to make the motion first.
Oh.
Oh, I thought I did, sorry. That was the resolution, but somebody moved to accept?
So move.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. There can be no discussion. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Barlow? Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Chair Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Slusner?
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Motion passes. This building?
Is going to explode.
So close. This meeting is adjourned at ten oh three P.M.